Welcome. Call the meeting's order. Roll call please, Beth.
Mayor Kavanaugh.
Yes.
Councilmember Yeats.
President.
Councilmember Lejeune.
Yes.
Councilmember Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Gicky.
Yes.
Councilmember Hampton.
Yes.
And Vice Mayor Elkin.
Yes.
All right. Just for the, uh, face of the public, I'll give you an idea of how we're gonna run this a little bit, maybe a little bit differently, um, so if anybody's here that you wanna speak, wanna make sure that everybody gets a chance, uh, to say something. What we're gonna do for, also for the people that are gonna be watching this, uh, we're gonna be breaking up the budget into sections, uh, to make it a little more understandable. Hopefully go section by section and clear those sections away. Um, if at any time anybody wants to put in a speaker card to speak on the issue that we are discussing at that time, just bring one up, um, so be a little flexible about whenever you wanna bring it up, um, whether it's during the presentation, during our discussion, then we'll make sure that I get to everyone. So, uh, we're gonna start off with a, uh, general overview, and then we'll get to, uh, administration, and then development services, and then community services, and then we'll see where we go from there, how much time we have to get to the rest of this, okay? Um, the only thing I ask is that, um, you know, come up, just try to stick to the three minutes, and also, if we're completely finished with a section and we're on a different section, just come up for that section, don't, you know, go back again and talk about the one that we're done with, just try and stick to the one we have, but you can come up anytime, anytime you want for each of the sections, so there's no, there's no limit on that. Okay, so we'll get started with, uh, our presentation, and I'll turn that over to Ken.
Okay, I'll move it to the council. Again, we're gonna start this, uh, um, budget process with a general overview of the budget, and then we'll get into, uh, the forecasting, um, both the deputy town manager and I will be, um, basically doing a tag team on this, where we both, um, sharing information regarding each of the slides, which is an overview, you do have that, the, uh, PowerPoint presentation in your, in your packet, as well as an executive summary, that was given, that hopefully it helped to, uh, explain some of the other areas, um, that we're gonna talk about in these four days of, uh, budgets that are, uh, budget process is scheduled tonight, May first, and then it will go to Monday, May sixth, Tuesday, May seventh, and, and, and Wednesday, May eighth, if, if necessary. Um, again, you have a, um, there's a handout for some housekeeping, there is a slide that, the sheet, that, that says, um, Fountain Hills Chamber, would you put that in your, uh, PowerPoint portion, um, right before Development Services? It was inadvertently left off, so if you scroll, if you scroll down into your, your, um, PowerPoint presentation in your binder, and put right before the slide says Development Services.
Okay.
Yeah.
I wanna mention that what you just got handed out was by request, that I, I asked that copies you made of the, of the HERF distribution from a couple of years ago, just for when we discuss that.
Thank you. And everyone has a copy of that now? Thank you. Okay. Okay, um, it generally starts when we start the budget process, we usually, uh, look back towards what we were looking at trying to do for the future, and the council, in an August, um, planning retreat, created some operational priorities, um, the seven areas that were pavement management, to economic development plan, to, um, begin negotiations with Fountain, uh, Fountain Lake, with, uh, um, sanitary district, the community partnership funding policies, the fire station two relocation, the town prosecutor, as well as the volunteer program. We then also added, um, these are the areas that will, are being addressed in this fiscal year coming up, fiscal year fourteen of those, um, as far as an economic development plan, a pavement management plan, the, uh, town prosecutor model determined and funded, um, place health for that, um, fire station two relocation is, is within the CIT, is scheduled for two thousand and fifteen, as it was approved in the CIT plan for the next ten years, um, Fountain Lake IDA, discussions underway, and the volunteer program reorganized, um, as well, that will be placed underneath the town manager starting July one. Also, the strategic plan goals, and there's, I believe, there's twelve of those, um, with those, um, we're looking again with the plans, some of them are, are redundant, um, from the operational plans, uh, the promote business expansion retention, the pavement management plan again, um, reliable source of funding for infrastructure maintenance, which is the, the pavement management plan on that, on that particular area. Interconnected multi-use trails, bike paths, uh, including the fit urban trails have been initiated with the first phase, and there's funding for, um, another phase of that coming up, as well as support community events and activities and build community friendships, there's some funding for that as well. And again, trying to, uh, address over the coming fiscal year, expand volunteer, uh, program, I'll begin reviewing that. What I like to start with is a, is, uh, Julie and I would start with budget presentation overview, um, for that, again, the proposed budget is forty-one million, six hundred and fifty-five thousand, three hundred and seventy-eight dollars. That's, uh, up ten million, um, and we'll explain it as we go through all of the sections, um, but predominantly, it is the budget for, um, placeholder should a, a successful election occur in November of two thousand and thirteen for the Saworal Bonds, Road Bond project, and then there's some CIP projects that, that increase those numbers as well. Um, we will, we'll talk about the budget highlights, an overview, a general overview of those, um, and then we're going to start by, um, in those, in that order for the core services, um, for the departmental budgets, um, public safety, administration, development services, community services, we'll then talk about the CIT plan, the fee schedule, the debt overview, and then last with, uh, the presentations, again, over these coming budget meetings personnel. So let's start with budget highlights, and please, if you have any questions, um, please ask them as, as we go along, if you have any for those. Um, again, the focus of this budget remains on core services, with a structurally balanced budget, um, expenditures match available revenues plus available fund balance to work on the one-time expenditures. Focus on street replacement, repair and maintenance, should, uh, the bond be successful, and coupled with other projects, um, it totals fourteen million, five hundred and three thousand dollars of, uh, street maintenance, repair and replacement, um, that hopefully could occur this, uh, coming fiscal year. Two million of that is, uh, the, the vehicle, uh, vehicle license tax and how we use the fund, uh, out of the, as well as the CIT, those are the three funding sources that will help provide a maintenance, um, operation on Palisades, Fountain Hills Boulevard, and a portion of Shea Boulevard, and what it'll do is for pavement failure repair, crack sealing and micro-surfacing program. Also, in, uh, in that is the Saworal, um, again, Saworal Bond Project for eight point two million that the council called for, uh, again, it's a placeholder in the budget for, for that, that amount of money. Shea Boulevard Street, asphalt and signal replacement project, um, this is money that we received from the Prop, um, two hundred, I'm sorry, Prop four hundred money, uh, with a grant from MAG, basically, um, to replace the asphalt on Shea from technology out to the B-line, and the, the signal will then will be replaced as well, it's, uh, it's up in age, it needs to be replaced. Also, there's a, in the CIT, there's four hundred thousand dollar signal light replacement at Palisades and Saworal, that is not part of the eight point two million dollar, um, bond, it is actually a CIT to Dicksma money. There is a placeholder for million six, for hu, um, mil, one million, six hundred and forty thousand for the Fountains', uh, median project, Avenue of the Fountains' median project, that was recently approved, um, to go ahead, bids are out as we speak. There is a, um, recommended two point five merit increase for the employees, which amounts to sixty-four thousand, five hundred and eight dollars, that's budgeted for, um, and there is a correction on the, on that bullet, um, it's, it's really the, the one, the only acceptance for town manager there is in the contract with presiding judge, that, um, if there is a, um, a merit increase, that the judge is also, uh, subject to that. But, all in all, with, um, even with the sixty-four thousand dollars for merit increase, the overall reduction in personnel costs from last year is six point four percent, so it costs six point four percent less for merit and, um, for personnel and benefits. Public safety, um, with fire focuses on acquisition of a new pumper truck, as well as the renovation of Fire Station One, um, there's also, what's not on that bullet, there's also a placeholder money that's, uh, there for, um, replacement of the self-contained breathing apparatus, there need to be replacements for those, they've, they've lived their lives, they need to be replaced. And then lastly, um, as a, as a result of the last council meeting, we have, um, we have funding for an economic development plan, that both, uh, for the downtown strategy, which was separated, uh, in funding, as well as for the rest of the plan to be implemented. So, the graph that basically shows you is a comparison from this past year to the new year of, in personnel as a reduction, in costs, there's a reduction in maintenance and utility costs, there's a increase of one point seven percent contractual services, there's, um, sixty-two percent in supplies, we have, uh, um, some increase in supplies that we needed to take care of, capital expense, um, there is, compared from last year, was eleven million dollars in CIT, um, budgeted funds to nineteen million, and largely has to do with that eight point two, um, for the Saworal Project. In debt service, uh, pretty much we stay the same, we still have debt out there, we'll explain that in the coming, um, sessions as well, and then the internal transfers that we do for those, that totals up at forty-one million. The budget summary, again, when you start looking at the HERF or the funding, the general fund is three point two, it's the same as last year, and we have three point, uh, two million total. Highway users, we see a, um, a slight increase in that, um, for highway user revenue fund. The excise tax, um, we added the VLT into that, um, into that fund to, um, um, as well as, I'm sorry, yes, the two point one million is the budgeted for the Avenue of the Fountains' project, correct, Julie?
Yes.
Yeah, the transfer in, no, I'm sorry. Special revenue funds, we have that, um, pretty much staying the same, the debt service, again, is a little bit, a little bit higher, um, the capital projects, um, again, as I explained in a previous file, and the internal fund transfers that we have as well, and that's pretty much a replacement fund for vehicles, again, that's the forty-one million, seven, seven hundred thousand budget. Within the general fund operating budget, as you can see, there's, uh, the number of the reductions that are, um, are being recommended, from the council's budget to the general government elect, uh, economic development, overall finance, H R I T, court services, teen court is a reduction, uh, development services, there's a continued reduction, as well as community services, fire and emergency is seven point six percent increase, as well as law enforcement, six percent increase in costs. Core services, as, as if you look at it from that perspective, public safety, six, six, uh, million, five hundred and ninety-six thousand, six hundred and thirty-six dollars, admin total is two million, five hundred and forty-three thousand, seven hundred and ninety-eight, I can go down the list, everyone can pretty much read those, but those are the core services and how they're funded to reach the forty-one million. The reserve fund, I'd like to ask, um, Julie to, um, to explain, um, what we have in the reserve fund.
Thank you, Ken, mayor, members of the council, um, this is a summary as of the end of March, this is our last quarter of what we have in our reserve fund, and this is for all the funds, and this is cash that's available, um, when I say it's available, some of the, most of it is restricted for the specific purpose, so in other words, everything but the general fund, those reserve funds are set aside and can only be used for the specific purpose that they were, um, they're accounted for. The general fund reserve is our fund balance requirement that we have as one of our financial policies, which is not, not appropriated, it's not included in the fund, that's money that we have set aside, that is sort of, um, a required reserve to keep our bond rating up, the bond rating agencies look at this to see if we have sufficient revenues in the event that there was some catastrophe or, or large event, that we would be able to continue operations and provide public service, public safety and service to the community. So these are as of March thirty-first, um, they won't probably change very much between now and June thirtieth, with the exception that next year, the capital project, the nine million dollars, we're anticipating to use, we've appropriated about four million dollars out of that fund to be used for next year. Uh, any questions on the reserve fund? Taking a look ahead, a five-year overview, um, some of the assumptions that we made looking forward, that this is really our new reality, that it's a razor-thin margin between the revenues and the expenditures, our, our revenue projections, we use a trend analysis, which is probably a little outdated now with the past economic downturn that we've had, but we also anticipate a flat two percent increase in all departmental budgets with the exception of public safety. And we are anticipating a little or no change in the distribution of state share revenue, so if there is a change or some legislative action to changes, that we will have to go back and make those changes. Um, we also anticipate maintaining the existing level of service that we have today, with, uh, no new programs and no hiring of additional employees. Again, the inflation factor of two percent, with the exception of the public safety, which we have contracts for, and they are projected at six percent for, um, six percent for the sheriff's contractor, N C S O, because again, it's a full cost recovery, whatever their costs are to provide that service is passed on to the town, and then, uh, rural natural fire projected six point seven percent increase this year, the contract is three percent, but we have the S C B As of the self-contained breathing apparatus in the fund, so that brings it up to six point seven percent. One important thing is, in previous years, we've always included or anticipated that there would be increased revenue from the development of the almond property of the state trust land, we've actually taken that out of the five-year projection and moved it further back. We're not having any indication that that property's gonna be developed within the next few years, and so we didn't want to include any revenue from that and make, you know, make assumptions that that was going to be there, so we've moved it out beyond five years, and obviously, if they do start, the property does get developed, then we'll come back and start bringing that up, but we don't see anything for the, in the foreseeable future for that. And then we've also included the T P P, or the transaction privilege tax, the construction sales tax revenue in our projections, so if there is a change in the legislature on that, um, construction sales tax, that we're no longer able to collect, we will have to go back and revisit the budget, because fifty percent of that goes into the general fund for operating costs, but as that this budget stands, we've anticipated no change in that.
Julie, can I stop you for a second with a question? Um, the maintaining existing level of service, is that, are you talking about, now we're now, we're down to now thirty-nine full-time employees, so you're talking about maintaining the thirty-nine, plus the part-time list?
Um, mayor, members of council, yes, that's correct, we're, um, saying that existing level of service meaning no new programs or no new adding of any staff.
Okay.
Um, this is just a snapshot of how many separate, different sets of books that we have as a governmental entity, governmental accounting requires different funds, and again, these are usually restricted for a specific purpose, with the exception of the general fund. The general fund is our main operating fund, where we pay for our parks, our community center, police and fire, all of our govern, general governmental operations, the other funds are all restricted to a specific purpose, so we have about twenty-three of those different sets of books or funds, as we call them. Taking a look out for five years, um, you can see that we have projections for thirteen, fourteen with a zero surplus, and again, that's because we have a balanced budget, looking forward to the next couple of years, you can see that if everything is consist, stays the same, and we have our two percent increase in our, um, contacts in public safety, we will have a pretty thin, um, surplus, I hesitate to call it a surplus, 'cause it's really not very much, but, um, again, this is just an estimate, taking a look on the future, the further out you go, the more difficult it is to, to make that estimate, but we want to, to take a look out and give you an idea of what the next five years look like in the general fund.
Mayor, if I may. Uh, Julie, just a quick question for you, um, two twelve thirteen, the projected surplus for the current fiscal year is, as you can see, four eighty-two, um, are we still on track for that, is that accurate?
Um, mayor, members of council, I'm actually, no, that does need to be revised, I think when we met last week, I talked about, we now have eight months, this was obviously done before that, during the budget preparation back in February, but it does not look like we will have that.
Very good.
At the end of this fiscal year.
Thank you.
Senator, mayor. Along those same lines, even though we probably aren't gonna see that four eighty-two, was there another deficit on top of that, that we're possibly looking at? Are revenues are short?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the first part of the question.
Um, this fiscal year, obviously, you're showing the four eighty-two, and if we adjust to that, it's obviously gonna be probably more like zero, um, I know we had discussed a few weeks ago that our revenues are much, uh, smaller than what we anticipated, would that actually put us in a negative?
Uh, mayor, members of council, no, we cannot deficit spend by law, so we will not, we monitor this as we go along, and we make adjustments and make sure that we don't, so we put a hold, we started probably a month and a half ago, just putting a hold on every expenditure until we get the revenue, so the worst case scenario is we will end at zero.
Okay.
But we won't, we won't deficit spend.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
The, um, as Ken talked about, one of our priorities is the pavement management program, and in this current fiscal year that we're in now, the council approved the, um, use of vehicle license tax revenue, which was always, had been historically in the general fund, it's now going to be in the highway user or the streets fund, along with our highway user revenue, and you can see that on this chart, all the column on the right, there's a significant increase in our streets fund or highway user revenue fund, and that's because of the extra seven hundred and fifty thousand that is now going in there for pavement management.
Mayor?
Ask a question?
Um, this is.
On, on two eighteen, which was about the HERF, um, let me see, go back to that, um, the actual amount that was listed as going, as, as having the revenue coming from HERF was two point one million, and then having the expenditures was two point three million, but the actual revenues from HERF, they said it's two point one million, right, it's what, um, what was that, just now, no, this one here, uh, sorry about that, scrolling through, it's actually like, um, one point, one million, two fifty, maybe, something like that?
One point, almost, no, one point two sixty-eight.
So, the HERF fund, so on that other slide, the revenue source is not HERF, so the two point one million, that, that includes all these other things, um, and one of the reasons why I, and I know it's really hard to figure out what the amount is, and, and this information on here is older, about the fund sweep from HERF, um, because it used to go to, uh, D P S and to M V D, and that was reflected in a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars less that our town got, which was, um, I guess I wanted to ask if there's any indication that that sweep will, uh, will continue as is, and what that amount is for us now, and if there's a, if there's a reason why maybe next year, um, we should engage in that conversation again, 'cause if it's a hundred thousand dollars of, uh, HERF money, um, it might be worth trying to at least get that, especially when you see how close we are, so, do you have any idea what that sweep amount would be, and is it worth pursuing to tie to, that the legislature to, um, not give that money to D P S?
Uh, mayor, members of the council, my understanding, again, from the league who provides us with this information, is there is not going to be a change in the distribution of the HERF revenues to cities and towns this year, and I think what I took from that is, if there is money being allocated to D P S, it is still gonna be allocated to D P S, so our revenue from the HERF revenue is about the same as it was last year, last year, meaning year we're in right now, so about one point two six five next year, and again, these numbers come from the league, it's one point two six eight, so that's my understanding from what the league has said.
And, and mayor Julie, the idea then, that when it went to D P S and M V D, it was a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars in twenty-twelve, this time it's just going to D P S, so I, and if I'm trying to get to the number that Fountain Hills is not realizing as a result of these HERF sweeps to D P S, and as you can see from this other document that came from, this is the league, that quite a bit of the D P S budget is being funded, uh, more than three quarters of it is not coming from the state general fund, and a, and a lot of it is coming from this D sweep, so I guess if it's a hundred thousand dollars, if it's fifty thousand dollars, is it worth pursuing and make that, making that part of a legislative, uh, effort to try to get that money restored? Do you know that amount?
I'm sorry, I do not.
Okay.
I can, I can find out from the league what that amount was, but all I, all I have from them is how much they're saying we're gonna get next year.
Okay, thank you, mayor.
Um, this is just a chart looking out to twenty eighteen, and you can see the, the, um, dark blue bars are the revenues, and the red bar is the expenditures, and you can see that it's, for the next five years, if, as things are, as we predict, it's gonna be a pretty razor-thin, um, margin that we have. Um, this chart is a compa, comparison between cities and towns around us, of our operating costs per one thousand citizens, so what you take is your general fund, what your general fund operating cost is, and divide it by a thousand citizens, and that is what your cost per citi, per thousand citizens is, and we're at fifty-six cents, which is actually the lowest of these cities that we looked at, and it's very similar to what it was two years ago, and the reason for that is because not only did our general fund operating costs go down, but our staffing went down as well, so we would have expected, if everything had stayed and we had the same staff, that the cost per citizen would go up, but because we reduced the staff and we reduced it, it's pretty much stayed the same. The other cities, um, have gone down, most of them have gone down from where they were a couple of years ago.
Mayor? Just, um, a note on the, uh, there, this graph appears in a few places, and just to be clear, it's fifty-six cents, and the graph looks like it goes over sixty cents, so maybe, um, if it's not just on this one, I saw it in the book too, so you might wanna push that back, so when we do look up and down to the other cities, it's fifty-six cents.
Okay, thank you. This chart is for, um, next fiscal year for the general fund, and what this shows is that our main source of revenue for the general fund, which is our operating fund, eighty-nine percent comes from two sources, one is our local sales tax, and the other is our state share revenues, which is the, um, sales tax, state sales tax and income tax. The rest of it is permits, licenses, eleven percent from building revenue and the permits.
Thank you, Julie.
Thanks, Julie.
Um, just as a general information, the organization is, um, organized in this manner, as, as previously discussed, um, obviously, you, you have the citizens and the, and the mayor and council, and you have the four appointed positions, um, from presiding judge, town prosecutor, town manager, town attorney, and then, um, the responsibilities underneath that, with fire EMS, community services, development services, administration, and law enforcement, um, under the responsibility of town manager. As you can see, it's color, uh, color, uh, um, there's a color chart to it, um, there's, there are some contracted, um, as you can see, law enforcement, fire EMS, and economic development is being planned to be contracted, will be proposed to be that. We'll start talking about depart, departmental overview for that, um, and begin with public safety, as I mentioned previously, um...
Can I stop you for just one second?
Yes.
Um, Deb, did anyone put any speaker cards since that first part of the program? No, ma'am, no, okay. I noticed a couple of people wandered in, just, uh, on, while we were doing that presentation, so we're gonna start with, um, this, this next section on public safety, if at any time you wanna put in a speaker card to talk about what you see up there during the presentation, just come up and do it, um, because I know you don't have an agenda, which shows everything is going to be going in order, so feel free to take one of the speaker cards and bring it up, just, um, once we're done with one section, then we'd rather not go back, so if you can pick up a question that you want, ask it during that, uh, presentation, okay? Thanks. Go ahead, Ken, sorry.
Thank you, mayor. Um, we'll start with fire and emergency management, uh, as you can see, three, uh, three million, four hundred and seventy-five thousand, thirteen dollars, which is an increase six point seven percent. which is an increase six point seven percent. Um, again, those activities are fire suppression, fire pre- fire prevention, emergency medical service, fire, building safety review, uh, involves a care program. This contract with Rural Metro, which goes to two thousand and fourteen, we currently are beginning negotiations to, uh, um, reauthorize that, recommend for reauthorization of that contract. And includes, uh, for self, as I mentioned earlier, uh, which includes funding for the self-contained breathing apparatus, a hundred and twenty-five thousand. And it also includes, again, depreciation costs of fire engines, but as, as well as the CIT, we have a fire truck that's in there that's being planned for, um, acquisition, um, as well as a squad truck that's in there, and the Station One, um, modifications. Again, by the, by matrix, you can show, we can see where the, some of the increases were in the various programs within fire, fire administration, fire safety, emergency EMS, and fire suppression, law care. All those, again, it's a six point seven percent increase that's being recommended.
Mayor.
Any questions?
Yes, Councilwoman Dickie, thank you. Just to be clear, the six point seven percent isn't like a, just a contrast that's going up in that amount, because it's actually including the hundred and twenty-five thousand for the self-contained breathing apparatus, um, and also the depreciation, so it's a little, looks a little different than just a contrast going up for, uh, costs or, or cost of living, kind of a thing like that. Um, so that is included in there, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, and then, Mayor, the next question has to do with the new, uh, going into the negotiation for the next stage of the contracting. And do you know how you're going to move forward with that? Will there be a committee, or how are you kind of anticipating that happening?
We started preliminaries right now, we've now talked about how we're going to use that. If, if the council wants some designated council members to sit with me, you know, it would be fine. I think that's what was done last time with it, um, we can talk about that. And, um, we're, we're trying to get the points and negotiations squared away first.
Thank you. Councilwoman Anderson?
Do we know how Paradise Valley is doing with their fire service fee and the legislature and-
I had a brief conversation with the town manager at a, at a recent, uh, MAG meeting, who indicated that locally, it's, the program is proceeding, um, the way it was designed to, to proceed. Unfortunately, there's a legislative movement to, um, to basically abolish the program for them. So we don't know where that's at in the legislature at this point, but, um, they're looking to try to get rid of it.
That's not very nice. I mean, considering that this is, I mean, a big chunk of our budget, and, I mean, we've talked about alternative possibilities before and-
As, as we mentioned, and that's a good point, um, a- as we mentioned in the past, um, budget retreat, that we talked about, um, watching that very closely, and we have been. Again, I, I talked to the town manager with, uh, Paradise Valley, who said that, again, the program as designed is going forward, but unfortunately, there's movement in the legislature to, um, get rid of the program. So we'll, we'll keep watching it, see what happens for the fiscal year, and see what they do. And keep the council informed. Any other questions regarding the, any areas of fire service? Law enforcement, um, three million, one hundred twenty-one thousand, six hundred twenty-four dollars, uh, six percent increase. Again, same level of service, three point eight beats plus school resource officer. Um, increase, uh, increases to county benefits are passed on through the, uh, to the town. Uh, it also includes the, um, contract with county with animal control and jail fees, as well as a recommendation to continue a fifteen thousand dollar, um, appropriation for the, um, sheriff's posse for continued vehicle maintenance. As you can see in the matrix, again, administration, uh, animal control, incarceration, transportation, and patrol are the areas.
Mayor. Councilwoman Elke?
Thank you. Ken, uh, question with respect to the incarceration transport, um, I know we utilize some of the posse benefits for some of the transport. Do we have an idea, um, what that breakdown of eighty-four thousand, uh, what percentage is incarceration, what is transport? Because my understanding is it's the sheriff's office that's transporting that's included in our contract.
Yes, Julie, did you follow that?
Uh, Mayor, Councilmember Elke, the incarceration is the per diem prisoner fee. For whoever, whenever anybody goes, and it, I think there's a fee to, to book them, and then there's the per diem fee, and that, that's what the incarceration fee is.
So, so when it says incarceration, uh, flag transport, that's strictly incarceration costs, then?
Yeah.
That's what we're talking about there?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Dickie?
Thank you. The, um, the inclu- increases to county benefits are passed on to the town, could you kind of define what that means, please?
Uh, Mayor, Members of the Council, as, uh, the Maricopa County is a full cost recovery program. So when we contract with them for a service, in this case, law enforcement, the cost associated with providing that program is, um, full cost recovery. So depending on how many beats we ask for, so we ask for three point eight beats. Each beat has so many deputies, has so many sergeants, we pay for the deputies as well as their benefits, including their retirement, their medical benefits, every cost associated with the employee, including uniforms, we pay for depreciation on the vehicles, we pay for dispatchings, we pay for their radios, we pay for any cost associated with the deputies, and it's all related to the number of beats. So if you decrease the number of beats, the whole thing decreases.
Um, thank you, Mayor. Um, the, one of the things that, um, a couple of people have been asking me since we're going through this exercise has to do with what, uh, what is, what would we have as benefits or as services from Maricopa County Sheriff's Office as just being part of Maricopa County as opposed to what we get out of the contract? And I don't, and I don't really ever know how to answer that very well, and I don't know if it's ever really been presented in that way. Just so that we see, okay, if we didn't contract, um, but we live in Maricopa County, pay taxes in Maricopa County, what kind of, uh, benefits and services would we get even if we didn't have this contract? And I don't expect you to be able to answer this now. And then the other question was the posse, is that ever something that's rolled into the contract?
Good question, I don't know what it would cost if we were unincorporated and, and not a town, you know, how much we would actually be paying and getting back. I think it'd still be District Seven, um-
Sorry, Mayor, let me just be clear, what if we're incorporated, but we had our own police department, but we're still Maricopa County taxpayers? Like, what does a city that has their own police department get from paying taxes in Maricopa County for the sheriff's department? It's not so hard to see where the line is.
I, in my experience, I can't speak about Maricopa County, but I can, can speak about another neighboring county, and you're not going to get anything from it, um, on that side, because if you have your own law enforcement, it's your, it's your responsibility. Um, if you look at the cost on that, about three point one million is of, we need to value that number because it's a, it's the best number going for law enforcement, frankly, in the whole valley, um, for what we get for law enforcement. When you look at the, um, when you look at what we're getting for that with the nineteen deputies and, and detectives, which is support services there, um, you, there's also some things that are not on that chart to you, that we're getting services from the base operations of, of, of MCSO. But if, but as an incorporated community, I mean, it's our responsibility to pay, to pay for that. And I can tell you from having police departments, um, that I've been responsible for, that number will go up considerably. You can, if you want to compare it to here, we'd double it, because you've got all the support services that you're going to need, that we get as part of this contract. And it'll show it on that organizational chart, but it shows as part of the, you know, as part of the base. When you start talking about twenty-four hour dispatching and everything else that goes with, uh, the nine-one-one administration, I mean, that's, that, those are, those are additional, additional costs that would come to us if we were to do it ourselves. And I would be safe to say that, that, I couldn't give you the exact number, but I would say double that, double our fee if we were doing it our own.
Oh, Mayor, Ken, I'm not suggesting that, what I'm, what I'm trying to figure out is a little bit like, if you look at, um, Maricopa County, if they ever do something, say in the city of Mesa, you know, you see something on, uh, you know, some sort of action, then they do do something in towns where they have their own police department. So I was just trying to figure out a way to answer and define that, and maybe it's a pretty complicated question. So at some point, maybe we can talk about it a little bit more.
Well, still, I just, if I was your addiction, and, and maybe I can have Captain Joel talk a little bit more about that. But, and that, you know, the county does assist on a lot of those, um-
Right.
And, and mut- mutual responsibilities that are out there, but I'll have him speak a little bit more eloquently to it than, than I could.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers. Uh, Councilwoman Dickie, I, I think, if I get the gist of the question is, what would we give back to the town? I believe if, if you didn't have your own police department, or?
Mayor, let me try to be, I guess, like, how, like, somebody said, oh, would we ever get a helicopter, would a helicopter come and do like a, a rescue? Or would there be a SWAT team and that, those kind of things? Even if you have your own police department, so like, say, the city of Mesa had a situation like that, doesn't MCSO assist as, you know, because you pay taxes to Maricopa County and were part of Maricopa County, even though I understand that you are more for unincorporated areas?
Okay, um, so basically, a support services type, type situation. We, we do assist, uh, other communities, the smaller communities here in Maricopa County, um, through, uh, IDAs possibly. Uh, we don't, we don't get involved in the core patrol aspects, or like the services you get here, but we, we do on occasion go and support them with that. Um, the way the valley's set up right now, I, I think about the only cities that we're down to would make, well, Youngtown now contracts with us, so I can't think of anybody else that does that. Either they're contracted by us, or they handle it themselves. Um, so that, I think that model probably would apply a little more to the rural communities, uh, you know, like Pinell County or some of the northern counties there. The, one of the communities, I know they're not incorporated, but if you want to kind of look into, uh, those things, I think Anthem, um, up there in the north, north valley is a great model, is they're not incorporated, they have thirty-six thousand people in that area, and they have, uh, one deputy on duty, that's one beat for thirty-six thousand people. And there's no mandate for us to give any more or any less, it's just, that's kind of where you would be, uh, in, in those situations. You know, they're thin, thin in the ranks.
Okay, that's-
Well-
That's a very good question, though, because there are, there are numbers for support services that, you know, mutual aid agreements, um, for that, as well as assists that, that are there, if they have the resources, believe me, they, they, they move on that. As well, you know, Scottsdale, though, I think it's both, that, both, um, if, if they need assistance, we'll be there. If we need assistance, they'll be to help with that.
Okay.
Okay, there is a request, uh, there was initial request for, uh, additional services for, um, MCSO posse, uh, thirty thousand. After discussions with them, we, it's a staff recommendation for fifteen thousand, that was the same level as last year, for vehicle maintenance.
Mm-hmm, okay.
The municipal court, um, as you can see with the, uh, organizational chart, um, it's down one position. Uh, that was to assist with, uh, the balancing of the budget and, and the transfer of the funds over to the pavement management program. As you can see, there's, uh, four positions, um, that are there. And the breakdown of three hundred and sixty-four thousand, one hundred and seventy-one dollars, which is nine point six percent less. Um, again, administration, civil cases, criminal cases and juvenile, so the total, as you can see, the breakdown as comparative from last year to this year. And, uh, our presiding judge is here, should you have any questions regarding any of the operations of the magistrate court?
Any questions? Vice Mayor Elke?
Thank you. Where is it? No. Just have a question regarding, uh, um, as far as the court numbers fiscal year to date, just as far as the number of cases. May, may not have specific judge, but, uh, can you just give, give us kind of a flavor of, um, the cases that are coming through the court, specifically, uh, civil traffic and criminal matters?
Um, Mayor Kavanaugh, Vice Mayor Elke, I don't have, um, the specifics, unfortunately, I, I didn't plan for that question here this evening. Um, I know, um, in general, we are down from last year, um, but in, um, April, we were almost double the number, um, from March, so, so it is increasing. So I think we're going to see, um, a, a decrease overall for this fiscal year. I don't think it's going to be as much as we anticipated a couple of months ago.
Mayor, I mean, Judge, would you be able to attribute anything as to why it would double from one month to the next? And when you say double, are you talking about crim- civil traffic as well as criminal matters?
Right, I'm talking all of the citations, um, that were issued by the sheriff's department. And as far as why things go the way they do with regard to, uh, the number of citations that are written, you'd have to talk to, um, Captain Rodriguez about that.
Well, you know, I think as a council, we had some discussion with staff about some special enforcement along Suaro because of some speeders. So perhaps, uh, I've seen more sheriff's deputies along Suaro that are doing traffic enforcement, so perhaps that might have had something to do with it as well.
I can tell you, one of the citations that, um, I dealt with this morning, um, was actually written by the captain out there, so. There must be something going on. So.
Right, thank you.
Yeah, I, I think there were several roads that, because of residents complaining, Suaro was one of them. I know there was a whole month of that, and then there was Golden Eagle, there was that school, Fountain Hill Boulevard. So it seemed like somebody read in the paper that they were going to step up on Suaro, and everybody said, you know, hey, I got a lot of speeding on my road too. So they did, they did, uh, hit a lot of the areas, and especially by the schools, you know, we do want them outside the schools and the speed zone. So maybe that's it, maybe that's, that's on to that. Is that, do you want some?
I was going to, I was going to, uh, make a, make a suggestion if I could, Mayor. Um, overall, just judging just the past two years, I was on the council, most of the time that we spent are on those union service contracts, the posse, uh, that we just discussed a moment ago being one of them. And then, uh, you know, we have some discussions about some line items as far as the budget is concerned. Um, and I know staff have made certain recommendations. Would it be possible for us to address those items as we go along, such as, as the posse item? So that, you know, at the end of the day here, at the end of the presentation, we're not going back again and addressing those particular items, whether it's a, a discussion and a no vote and leaving it as is, or arriving at a conclusion to, to sort of-
Exactly, yeah, that's exactly, as a matter of fact, I was going to close, as soon as Ken was finished with the court, I was going to close this section and ask if there was any speakers or nothing, okay? And then I was going to ask if there was any other council discussion on that. And we were hoping then to close this section with the most amount of votes if everyone was satisfied. However, if you have any questions about anything that Ken has discussed before, we do that, and then we can move on to the next section. And you're right, it was, the purpose was for that, at the end, we're not bouncing back and forth. So did you have a, a something you wanted to ask about, anything in, in here?
No, with the, uh, with the numbers and the recommendations of staff thus far, um, I'm satisfied with what Ken presented.
Okay, does anyone else have any, anything they would like to ask about this section?
Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman?
With regard to the posse ask and what we're, we're allocating, are we diminishing any services for that? I know it says specifically for vehicles. Was it a new vehicle, was it maintenance of the existing vehicle, uh?
Captain has to be closer. Looking like a real car.
Never turn your back to the door.
Yeah.
Uh, Councilman, the, the vehicle maintenance that they're doing is basically, I believe at this point, they have six or seven vehicles in their fleet, and that, that money is just spread out throughout those vehicles. They submit, uh, the bill for the vehicle as it comes in, so that money doesn't go directly to them as it wants to do. It is paid, uh, bill by bill by the town. So if they don't spend it, uh, at the end of the year, it's, it's not money that they get to keep. But their vehicles, a couple of them are, will be a bit older, they generally buy them used from, uh, some of the richer posses in the west valley. And, um, they're trying to just kind of keep everything above water and, and make sure everything's at least safe. The minimum repairs are done to keep the vehicle safe and on the road.
So, Madam Mayor, uh, Captain, so if I'm hearing you correctly, then the services aren't diminishing per se, it's just a, a safety fund, if you will, that in case something breaks, breaks, et cetera. Yeah, I, I think that fifteen thousand, this was the first year-
Yeah, I, I think that fifteen thousand, this was the first year that they actually did it, and I'm talking to their commander, it sounded like it, that cost covered their, the general maintenance that you're gonna need on any vehicle throughout the year for that fleet. Um, anything above and beyond that amount would probably help them to maybe catch up on some of the smaller repairs that might be, need to be done, or possibly help them get to the point where they can get a newer vehicle in their fleet. Um, but again, that would, that is specific for maintenance, so keep them on the road.
Thanks, Captain.
Thank you.
Anyone else, Councilwoman Dickie?
Thank you, Mayor, Captain, the vehicles that, um, are supplemented, the repairs by this, um, do are only used in Fountain Hills, is that true?
That, that is correct, that is correct, they, um, and it's what we've also done to try to help them out as well, we tell them, because they do have older vehicles, is if available, um, we also make the vehicles that we have, uh, for them to use up here in Fountain Hills. Uh, you know, if they, if they need to jump in one of ours, if they're having mechanical issues, we'll allow them to borrow one of ours in, in the, in the meantime, while the repairs are done. But those do stay in Fountain Hills, um, the occasional drive down to the training center, uh, possibly, or, uh, you know, to go get fuel on off-site up at McDowell Mountain Park or something, that's about it, they don't go anywhere else.
Thank you. Anything else from anyone, Councilwoman Hampson?
Good.
Oh. I thought I read somewhere about, and this is back in fire and emergency medical, about the self continued breathing apparatuses, there was a possibility of a grant for that?
Yes, that's a good question, um, and we probably needed to expand off of that, if maybe Chief Agreta could come up and assist me on that. But yes, we're, we've applied for a FEMA grant, um, we're also asking for some other grant opportunities. But we also have as a placeholder budgeted funds in case neither one of those pan out. So there is bu- there is budgeted funds for that, but if we could get a grant, then we would be able to save that funding.
And I guess I was just wondering what the timeframe might be that we would know if we were getting a grant that would help, help offset that?
Mayor, Councilwoman Hampson, uh, the FEMA grant, we should know, should have known by now, but we haven't heard anything, so we're still in the game. But one thing that we have discovered is that there's a contract called the Mojave Contract, and, uh, Subuchanan and Maguire are probably, uh, familiar with it, it's kind of like Phoenix Contract, but much bigger. And the S- SCBA that we would be interested is on that contract, primarily through Northwest Fire District down in the Tucson area. And, uh, we've looked into that through the, uh, vendor here, and instead of spending a hundred and twenty-six thousand, whether we buy these through a grant or we have to reach into our pocketbook, we can get them for eighty-six thousand. So there's about a forty-two thousand dollar savings by identifying this, uh, this contract.
So then in the public safety and general area, would there be the possibility if, if some of that funding was freed up, that, you know, possibly maybe a little bit more could go to depositing the vehicle maintenance and that? I mean, would we be able to do that?
It'd be up to the council, depending on what happens with the, uh, final acquisition of SCBA here.
So we're looking for ways to try to diminish that cost, hopefully we'll know soon.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor?
Thank you.
Councilwoman Dickie?
I move to accept the, um, public safety budget, uh, as presented by staff. Mayor, second.
Any further discussion, any other no speaker cards came up? Okay, uh, then let's do a, why don't we do a roll call vote on these?
Councilmember Dickie?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee Jay?
Aye.
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Councilmember Dickie?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Elke?
Aye.
And Mayor Cavanaugh?
Aye.
Mayor Cavanaugh?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, um, talk about the next core service with, uh, administration. Okay, as part of public safety, that would've been, that would've been all, all three divisions. Uh, the question was, was, was municipal court part of that, and? Guess it was.
Well, then I won't change my mind. Too late.
Uh, administration, uh, it's budgeted for two million and ninety-nine thousand, two hundred and fifty-five dollars, which is four point three percent down from, uh, the previous fiscal year. Those core services that make up administration, again, is town manager, the legal services that, uh, require, the town clerk, finance, um, HR, IT, and economic development program. And as you can see down at the bottom, uh, or you see in the middle of the slide, and, and on your slide that you have in front of you, uh, in your handout, um, that, it also includes, you know, the, the greater, um, activities that are within each, uh, core responsibilities within each one of those areas. And then again, the budgets that are there for each one with town manager's, uh, budget, the IT, the town clerk, uh, um, human resources, costs, the finance, um, economic development, legal services. Again, it's organized, um, in that, in that manner, um, as you can see with, um, the color chart, again, the dark blue, um, are full-time, um, the lime green are basically the part-time, and the, and the lighter blue is contract. Again, from the matrix, as you can see, the previous year's, uh, previous year budget compared to the proposed budget for fiscal year fourteen, and, um, that's pretty much self-explanatory, and we'll be happy to answer any questions you might have regarding, uh, any of those.
Vice Mayor Elke?
Thank you. Ken, when you, under legal services, uh, the proposed budget is three thirteen, six forty-one, can you break that down as far as town attorney, town prosecutor for me?
Well, let's get the, um, line item, the line item budget part of that, um.
I guess a one ten, if I recall correctly, for the town prosecutor, would, would be safe, safe to assume then that the balance of that would be for town attorney?
I mean, Vice Mayor Elke, it is for the prosecutor at a hundred and ten thousand, there's also public defender in there, um, legal publications, and the town attorney at a hundred and ninety-four.
So you're one ninety-four, one ten, and I think a sixteen?
Public defender for forty-eight hundred, and then legal publications forty-two hundred.
Councilwoman, from what, uh, Councilman Elke was talking about, so what's the status of any sort of change in that, um, in a public, I mean, in the prosecutor?
As directed, yes, good question, as directed by the council, um, go back, create a, um, a, a contract with, with our pro- prosecution services, and we're still in the, in the middle of negotiating those. So what we're doing is placeholder that money and budget at this point in time, contingent, and, and agreement will come back to the council for approval.
Councilman Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Ken, everything goes down, if we get to financing, financing has gone up, even though we've cut one half-time, uh, full-time employee, what generated that increase?
Uh, Mayor, Councilmember Dennis Brown, um, some of that is salaries, there's a salary adjustment, and there is also a new cost for the town of Fountain Hills to participate in the state's open books program, which is a transparency program, and we have to pay the state for that, and that is where anybody can go into the state, hook onto Fountain Hills, and look at all of our expenses and revenues.
Thank you.
And it's just to that point, I think we've already started doing that, right, putting that on the website?
Yes, actually, we are one of, I think, three cities, and I was gonna have that in the next avenues, that we are one of three or four cities that have already signed on, and if you go onto the state's open books website, you can link to the town of Fountain Hills, and all of our records are there for any citizen to look up.
Oh, that's great, okay, anything else we're doing right now? Okay, can you go on?
Um, as you have the handout and the, and the, the proposal for fee for service, you have, um, um, a food bank that requested thirty thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. Um, again, there was a staff, there's a staff recommendation of, of fifteen thousand, one twenty-five. Um, be happy to answer any questions, I'm not sure there's a representative from food bank here tonight.
Councilwoman Dickie? Thank you, Mayor, what was the amount from last year again?
Thirty thousand, two fifty.
That was a thirty-two fifty, so the request was for the same. And at that point, Mayor, it was, uh, it went, what were, what did we, um, allocate that for? I, I know we had spoken about just having it to be about food or delivery of food, would, would that be the same this year if it was the thirty thousand?
That's, I'm, I'm not sure that's unknown at, at this point in time until we negotiate the contract. But I would believe it would be the same concept that we'd be doing that we asked for last year, just a reduced amount.
Mayor, if I may?
Okay, I think you might. I'm, I'm not sure, so let's, let's see what Henry has to say, maybe that'll help answer my question.
I don't have a lot to say other than the contract's in our packet, and it specifies specifically what, what the fee for service is, and it doesn't designate specifically food, I think it's more for facilities.
Right, I, I, I.
Is that accurate?
I think it was utilities?
Yeah, I, there's, there's a, I mean.
Utilities, they used before last year?
You know, if, if you could probably, you know, go, go through, through that list, we do have that information, um, in that contract in the packet, yeah.
Yes, uh, Mayor, members of the council, the request from the food bank is for, designated for overhead, rent, utilities. It partially covers some of the overhead costs.
Is that, is that this, to answer your question, or?
Uh, yes, Mayor, thank you, I, I wanted to get a feel, cause I can't remember exactly what it went to for last year.
Mm-hmm.
Is, and this is a change, is that, is that not right, this is not a change? So the thirty thousand last year went to overhead?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Okay. Ken, can you go on?
Not sure if there's not a public speaker request.
I'm gonna fill out a card, you can. You can fill out a card, okay, you can go, go ahead, and then I'll, he's seen hands in their cards, we'll, we'll round back.
Well, we could go ahead and wait, because I'll be, I'll be walking into that economic development.
Mayor? Mayor, if I may, while we're, we're waiting, just, uh, if I may, a point of justification, um, so at this particular point in time, we're not aware of what the, in all of our fee for service contracts, we have an amount of money people are requesting as recommendations from staff. With respect to the prosecutor, we at this point in time don't know what that contract's gonna come in at. It's my, we budgeted a hundred and ten thousand dollars, um, what I'm hearing you say is that if that comes in at a hundred and ten, or if it comes in lower, um, hopefully it won't come in higher, we'll be able to negotiate that at that point in time, is that correct?
It'd be up to the mayor and council, yeah.
Okay, very, very good. The only reason I say that, there's a kind of an oxymoron here, because in the operational budget, it talks about the, um, public defender, and it talks about the notion that the volume of work has gone down significantly, and the public defender's, uh, salary, if you may, or per diem, has been cut significantly. Yet, the prosecutor's number in the budget remains the same, although that caseload has gone down significantly. So there's kind of a, just a mixed message there, if you may, so obviously we'll have an opportunity to follow up on this when, um, that contract is, is, is submitted. I know that when we had the discussion, I think the expectation was that the prosecutor would come in at a lower cost and/or increase the scope. So I'll be happy to see, if it's a scope, then I can justify the one ten, if the scope doesn't increase, then I guess it's something we can discuss at a later date. Thank you.
And we'll go to the speaker time.
Marty Jacobs.
Hi. I'm Marty Jacobs, I'm a resident of Fountain Hills. And, uh, I have worked at the food bank, and, uh, I've been talking with community members who have stood in line for the food, and their circumstances are such that they do not necessarily have food stamps or other sources of food, uh, because of a certain sudden event in their life. It could be medical, to housing, and so on, and I just wanna say that the food bank gets, uh, so much food from, uh, groceries and so on, that donate their food, so that is why so much is needed, just to keep the building going. And I've been there on Thanksgiving and Christmas and everything else, and I just can't implore you enough, uh, without being used to speaking before you before, to please, please reconsider about the food bank. I've written articles for them for the newspaper once, and et cetera, I just say, please help them. And help them help people who have no food, they need food more than anything, it makes a family survive versus not survive. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion on this before Ken goes on?
Mayor? Uh, thank you.
Councilwoman Dickie?
Just, uh, one, if we're gonna move, if we're gonna proceed the way we just did with the other, um, just to ask you what you think would be like a next motion or that kind of thing, I mean, do you wanna, we're just gonna do development, I mean, um, sorry, administrative?
We're gonna go on to economic development, so that would cover the chamber, jumpstart there, and the detech. And then at that point, we would break that off and then move on to development services, you know, just say that that's, at that point, we'll stop.
Okay, um, well, Mayor, then.
But you should, if you wanted to say something about, you know, the food bank, I mean, you could jump in any time if you wanted to comment on that, that's fine.
Well, uh, yeah, Mayor, I think that, um, you know, we, I know that we go back and forth about these items for one reason or another, whether it's still topical or just playing out of money, but this is a, um, something that is very much affect, it affects Fountain Hills residents. A fifty percent seems a little, a little abrupt, um, even though I know that we talked about lowering it, um, and whether we should be doing it at all, it's just a really hard discussion to have, but, you know, in light of, even what Henry was just talking about with the prosecutor, uh, the, you have a prosecutor, possible changes there, um, and something else that I wanted to bring up even as we move forward, which is some, some interest money that, uh, we did realize this year, that, that was pretty good, maybe seventy-five thousand dollars, and there was a, uh, recovery that we got from ages ago, when, when we, uh, we had those investments, and we've actually recovered another, I think it was twenty-eight thousand dollars, so I know that we're really focusing on those and those things like that, but, um, I, I would, I, I would like to try and, um, supplement this a little bit more. I don't know if we wanna do this now, or, or if that's the kind of thing we're talking about, but, um, I would, uh, I would ask council to consider maybe, uh, making this a, um, recommendation for, for say twenty thousand instead of fifteen, and, uh, see if you can see a way to that, which would diminish it by a little bit less than, than it would occur, so.
I just to clarify, the speaker that, um, just came up, she, she wants to make sure that we understand, she's asking us to fund the full thirty thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Councilwoman Yates?
Are we allowed to ask questions to the, uh?
You can do whatever you want, you're a councilman.
Could you, could you come back up here, I had a couple of questions?
Would you mind? Since you're the only one here from the food bank, and you work there.
And I appreciate, thank you very much for the services that you do and, and coming up here. Uh, how large is your facility?
I'm sorry, I don't, I've only done minimal volunteer work there.
Okay.
Um, my request is reconsideration for an increased amount.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that's all I'm saying, even if it's half again, the twenty thousand or?
Okay.
Please, just reconsideration, I know what it's like at that facility and for the people, that's all.
So it sounds like you're saying to yourself that there's a lot of people coming for food now, and some don't have other resources for food, and emergency situations, something happened, interim, whatever, and they have to come there and they have no other way to get food?
Absolutely, yes, and they do have to fill out a form, letting the state know that they are receiving food from the food bank, these days. So it is that they have a need, um, because they do not have access to food, and that is the one thing that helps the families survive, please. Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Councilwoman Yates?
Where I was going with this is I, I did some research on this, and specifically a food bank operation. Scottsdale has an excellent, uh, uh, business model for this, they actually have space where the city of Scottsdale gives the food bank to use, obviously for, for free, and that's, that's a contribution. It just seems that we're, we're giving money and it's for your utilities and, and your overhead, and I appreciate that, but obviously the main gist here is to try to get food out, um, I, I had asked the mayor and, and I, I guess maybe this is a Reno question, if there's any space at, uh, the community center, um, but not knowing how, what your, your needs are as far as, uh, that, and whether you're in a lease and, and things of that nature, but I guess where I'm going is, is the thing-
But I guess where I'm going is, is to think out of the box of, as far as instead of giving you money towards utilities and rent and, and overhead that way, if we could give more, some space, because then, Jimmy, it would, in essence, do both. It would, it would cut the need to give you some of the physical funds because we're gonna give you access to, uh, real estate, which is in essence what, what we're using this fund for anyway.
They have a, they are at a new location and they got new freezers about a year and a half or two ago, last I understand. So it's really about, um, being able to keep that building where they are, I believe renting it, and, uh, the new freezers. And it certainly would be nice if they had something besides dry goods. I personally, I would like to see frozen foods and real food besides canned food and dry junk food and, uh, real food. And food that's old and next step is the dumpster. So they need it towards food too. And they're holding even yard sales in order to get money over the tiniest bits of donated, uh, I mean, economically, it's not a lot of money when you look at holding yard sales to try to have enough money as well as putting up, uh, a booth at some of our local events and so on. Struggling to get the money. It's a great strain. That's what I know too.
Mayor, oh, excuse me. Mayor, if I may, um-
Should we sit down? Did you want to ask her something?
Oh, no, you can sit down.
This is fatso representative, please instead of-
Now they should sat down. Um, just, just a point of clarification. I, I really appreciate, uh, Councilwoman Yates, uh, thinking out of the box. I mean, that's, that's, that's a great idea. I think, um, having been by the food bank, I think their square footage requirements were probably more than we could meet, number one. And number two, they're, they're pretty much locked into a lease because they've moved their location of the facility they're at. But I, I like your, your idea. If the food bank gets so large and they, uh, exceed their space, then, then, you know, maybe we could have a substation down here.
Just it might-
But I'm fine.
Maybe Harden has a fish fry in the community center too. They do that on Fridays.
Anyway, thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you.
Go on.
Um, if I remember correctly, two years ago, uh, when we were addressing all the financial shortfalls that we were having, I think it was a ten percent reduction or somewhere in that ballpark that we had done with respect to the food bank. Last year, if I recall correctly, we maintained the status quo and there weren't any, any reductions. And, um, without getting into philosophical discussions, uh, about town funds being used to fund the food bank, whether we should be doing that or not, is it a fee for service, that sort of thing? Certainly, all of us up here in tribute to the community and not just here as councilmembers, who are very in tune and give back to this community. It's not that anybody doesn't have a heart. It's just that certainly our budget is, as, uh, Mr. Eddy mentioned it a little while ago, it's razor thin. Um, in line with what had occurred two years ago where we had a ten percent reduction, last year we didn't have any reduction. Um, I would feel comfortable with a, a overall twenty percent reduction of the food banks, um, from the previous year. The previous year being thirty thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. So with that, um, I would make a motion to approve funding for the food bank for this coming fiscal year in the amount of twenty-four thousand two hundred dollars, which again, represents a twenty percent reduction. And my rationale behind that is ten percent is probably where we should have been last year as well. Um, I'm not in favor with any of these community service contracts and cutting their legs out from under them. We should have a slow movement away, you know, based on the funding that we have. Um, and, um, I would feel comfortable with that.
Thank you. Any other speaker parts?
No, ma'am.
Any other discussions?
Mayor, members of the council, you're going to have to take that from someplace. If you're gonna increase this budget, we've gotta take it from someplace else.
Well, Mayor, uh, again, I think we have seventy-five thousand dollars in interest and twenty-eight thousand dollars. And if we get first to not sweep, I mean, I, I, I can't imagine this, uh, exercise for us to have to go through and find each of these things. If this is the, uh, will to go ahead with this, um, I, I'm not gonna prescribe exactly how to find this six thousand dollars here. I just think that if it passes through, we'll find a way.
My recommendation is you're gonna have to take it from that line item right there. And that's the transfer of, of general fund monies to the economic development fund. You have to take it out of that ninety. I wouldn't recommend reducing any of the departmental budgets. They've already been reduced enough. We're down to a point where we're, we're trying, we're razor thin on those core services and their funding levels.
Vice Mayor Elke.
Thank you. What, I think, I mean, we're gonna have discussions, I mean, this is the second contract, as we're gonna have discussions about other items as well. Um, and at the end of the day, I'm not comfortable with saying what takes from here to there, there to here. Um, because it, it, it goes back to that situation where you're playing one off of the other and, and again, they should stand on their own. And I appreciate Mr. Buchanan, what you're saying as far as finding the money. Um, I think we should keep a tally at the end of it and then figure out where we're gonna get it from at that point.
Madam Mayor, uh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Respectfully, um, and I know we're, we're municipal government, but I, I'm just trying to, to grasp a, a business model or, or any kind of model, I'm sorry, Henry, of, of how you do that. Because it, it is, it's a balancing act and, and I know there are certain funds that are extremely restrictive. It's not like we can just take it out of the rainy day fund. Um, I, I'd like a little bit more guidance because I don't want to say that, okay, at the end of the day, and then we're stuck with taking it out of a department or another fund that we weren't anticipating, take it out of whatever that fund may be. So I, I guess, I'm, I'm more along the lines of if, if we're gonna up this, which I'm, I'm not against that, but I think we should, um, find it right here, right now. Because I, I don't want to be painted in a corner and then all of a sudden at the end of the day, we're like, uh-oh. And who, whatever that department is, I don't want to be, um, painted in the corner to say, well, I'm sorry, we gotta get it from somewhere therefore, you know, you're the last guy holding the bag. I'm sorry, I keep saying business model, I apologize. I, I like business model.
Yeah, very good.
Councilwoman Brown.
Thank you. Could we address the seventy-five thousand and twenty-eight thousand dollars interest that Councilwoman Dicky, uh, she was talking about?
Do we?
Uh, Mayor, members of the council, actually, the money that Councilmember Dicky's talking about is money that we've received this year and I think you all got a notice of it. So that money is money we've received this year. We would have to spend this year. It's not money that we take and put over into next year. Does that make sense?
Have we already spent it?
No. It's, it's in this year's budget though. And if you remember, we're having a shortfall this year of about five hundred thousand. So it's going to help eliminate that shortfall this year. But what I'm saying is any money or revenue that we've gotten this year at the end of the year, that rolls into your general fund balance if you have any left over. Uh, I'm not anticipating that we're gonna have any, or very little left over at the end of this fiscal year. So it is money that we did get, yes, this year, the recovery from the, um, the local government investment pool. But it is not money that is available for appropriation next year. We've appropriated everything that we think we're gonna get next year.
Mayor, um, Councilwoman Yates, I, I agree with you. You know, business models, we, we, I think the town is, is, is run like a business. And what we're looking at here basically is, is general fund. And I, I'm not sure if we're adding money to the administrative budget that we necessarily need to take it from someplace in the administrative budget. What I would suggest is that as we move through the budget, as Vice Mayor Elke mentioned, we keep a tally of if we're adding, who knows, we might even be subtracting, uh, as we move through the process. So let's look what that, that final number is, um, and, and, and kind of go from there. And frankly, as a business person, then what I would suggest is then we direct staff to go back and rework the budget to see if there's some wiggle room in, throughout the general fund budget. Um, for example, well, I'm, I'm not gonna look at specifics about line items, but I, I would suggest we do a count, as Vice, uh, Mayor Elke said, is tally what we're adding. Maybe we're subtracting some stuff, see where that's at. And then I guess at the end of the meeting, we can determine if we want to go back and drill down for every line item to see where we want to change it or direct staff to go back and come back to us, which is what we've done in previous years. Um, so that, that, those are my thoughts.
Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Hampton.
Well, and that being said, perhaps in the areas where we're having more consternation and it's not as straightforward as like the public safety was, is that we don't initiate a motion tonight. Maybe we, um, discuss things that we feel we would like to tweak in some way, but we're not prepared at this minute to say, and we're gonna take it from page twenty-four or something. And maybe defer that motion on approval of a particular, um, division. And since we do have three more meetings on this, if, if you need to.
Mayor, if I may.
Uh, thanks, Councilwoman.
Oh, no, no, I'll yield to the honorable.
Just go.
Um, not the money the water is more, but I know, uh, part of the, the, this next year, we're, we're laying, not laying some people off, but, uh, we're cutting staff, uh, we're cutting back. Um, everybody in this room, I'm sure, can relate to cutting cable at home or cutting the newspaper or cutting phone or that extra line or that extra latte. Um, could, could I hear a, could I get some more information about what the salary adjustment is up and, and how we're increasing some salaries since we're cutting staff? I need a little bit more information on that.
In context of what?
Well, that, that, and again, I didn't mean the money the waters, but it seems that-
The reason why I'm asking the question is that is it because of the sixty-eight thousand that we have that's for the merit, that's a two, two point five percent?
Is that it? That's the, the only raise?
That's the cost, that's the cost of the two point five percent merit.
So, so the change, salary adjustment is just a merit increase?
I'm sorry?
The salary adjustment for staff on that line item is just for merit increase?
An adjustment of a, of the position, of one position.
Is the adjustment of that one position going up or down or up some-
As recommended in the, in the, in the report, it's going up.
Okay.
Mayor, if I may. And, and if we approve, if, if we vote on this and approve this section as we did the, uh, public safety, does that automatically, does that raise automatically going to effect or is it still going to be discussed?
It's still be discussed.
Councilwoman Dicker?
Just, um, I, I think when we make motions, if we do continue in that way, it's because we're deciding that that's what we're prioritizing and then it will have to fall as it may on how that results. So I think that, I'm not opposed to doing the motions. I think it's okay if we don't want to. But if we're, here all seven of us and, and saying, yes, we want to do this, then I think that, that's the purpose of going through this. If, otherwise, why don't we just say, well, we've got this whole thing as is. What we're doing now is a process of going through what we hopefully will come to a conclusion where we almost all will agree on these back and forth sort of things. And, um, you know, I know it's razor thin, but I also know that every, all year long, we make changes and adjustments. And so I think we're giving a message right now, at least with this item, that we'd like it to be a little bit more. And then we'll just make the tip fall. But it's not fair to pick what we're gonna do right now when we haven't even gone through the whole rest of the budget yet. Uh, but I'm not opposed to doing, to still doing, um, motions unless people are uncomfortable with that and we can come back to that.
Well, I, I guess the, the whole idea was to, to make it easier to do each section rather than when we got three days from now, going back and forth. And I guess we could pull this out and make this a separate, we could make this a separate, uh, it looks like we have this as a separate motion right now. There's a motion on the floor to increase this and this is not related to the other part of administration. The motion right now is just for the food bank. So I have a motion and a second on the floor, so I'm, I'm gonna get a vote on that.
Mayor, a point of clarification, because as you just stated, as we go through this individually, there are subsets of the administrative budget versus public safety. We just did one, 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 one motion. So question for Andrew. Andrew, um, would it make sense to do these individual motions or wait for a main motion with amendments? In other words, yeah, like that?
Um, Madam Mayor and Councilmember of the day, it's, it's really up to the council on how you want to proceed. The process was indicated to, to try and truncate the discussion as the pieces the council had agreement on. So if a larger section like the administration budget needs to be broken down into the smaller pieces of agreement and leaving those things not yet agreed to on the table, then you certainly can do that as well. There's really no set process for this. It was just a method to try and carve away the things that weren't disagreements on, so you didn't talk about.
I, I don't think I was clear. For example, if we move through the administrative budget and we get to the end and we basically say, uh, move to approve staff recommendations with the following exceptions, and then just list what those exceptions are that we're coming up with at this point. But I would imagine we would have to vote on them so that they would in fact be accepted.
It can be part of a single motion. It can be individual motions at the one of the end. Doesn't matter.
Speaking about money in the water. Thank you, Mayor. So Mayor, I think before I interrupted you, you said there was a motion on, on the floor, so thank you.
It, it, there's a motion and a second for just the food bank. Um, and I guess what Andrew's saying is that we could, we could vote on all the other sections and then not vote on that one section until a later time when we're satisfied that we do have the money. But right now, we do have a motion and a second for increasing to twenty-four thousand two hundred. So, uh, can we get a vote on that? Roll call.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Dicky?
Aye.
Councilmember Yates?
Aye.
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Elke?
Aye.
Councilmember Lishay?
Aye.
And Mayor Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Mayor Seven Zero.
Okay.
So for the record, what is our tally now? Hmm.
Uh-huh.
Are we going there? Ninety-two or nine thousand and seventy-five?
All right, so we'll go on with, uh, economic development?
Yeah. Members of the council, again, you've adopted a economic development plan. And, uh, the budget is the implementer of that plan. As you see, the, um, the various areas of the targeted industry sector with that. Um, from the previous council meeting, with, with respect to the excise tax funds, that one tenth of a percent excise tax that was created back in the year two thousand. Um, as a result of a motion last week, forty percent of that fund was to, uh, specifically go for the downtown strategy. Second part of that is, is that if there's any fund balance of that tax, of, of the current fund balance, um, within the excise tax stays with downtown as well. Um, that's, that's be the balance of what is left from the avenue of median budget. So the sixty percent, um, if you look at the two hundred and sixty-one thousand three hundred and fifty-nine, we have sixty percent of the one hundred and seventy-one thousand one nineteen. Again, the, um, ninety thousand was removed from the general fund in this current fiscal year to balance the payment management program. With the proposed new budget, we put the transfer of fu, general fund monies back into that economic development program. So the total available is two hundred and sixty-one thousand three hundred and fifty, uh, three hundred and fifty-nine dollars. Again, you do have some programs costs. One of them is the Christmas lighting that we do annually. Um, we have a forty-five hundred dollar recommended budget for jumpstart biz. Um, and the twenty-five thousand, which this fiscal year was fifty thousand for any new programming for new events. Um, in, uh, especially in the spring and with emphasis with the spring and summer, we reduce that to twenty-five thousand for, as recommended. The deep back dues, again, is supposed, is required, the formula for participation with regional economic development efforts, eighty-eight, um, one hundred and forty-four dollars. And again, the two, the tourism, um, component of the economic development plan, um, is, um, recommended to be a hundred and three thousand. So that remains about eighty-nine thousand six fifty-five for, for the remaining strategies.
Any discussion on this before we move on? Disagreement on this? No? No, ma'am, I think?
Mayor, if I may, just, just, just a comment. Um, we all recall having this discussion in our last council meeting. And, um, as I look at the two sixty-one total and I look at what programs are being, um, appropriated from that two sixty-one, I think there was enough flexibility in the motion that was made to take the Christmas lighting of- to take the Christmas lighting of thirty thousand three fifty and move that into the forty percent downtown fund. Now, the reason I say that is that a precedent has been set. We have always used that downtown fund for that particular money. The motion was for infrastructure and, and downtown development, I mean, that's, that's part of that interpretation. And, and, and probably the main reason why I go there is that that then brings that eighty-nine thousand, let's just say it's ninety thousand, and that brings that up to, if my math is correct, a hundred and twenty thousand, which to me is a lot more reasonable number to implement the, the, the balance of, of the, the economic development plan, which was the intention of that motion to begin with. So, um, if there's no further discussion, I'm not sure if that requires a motion, but, uh, I would, you know, I'm hitting ahead now. I would suggest that that thirty thousand three fifty is moved from the sixty percent fund up to the forty percent fund.
I'll second that, I can reflect that.
Any discussion on this motion? And are you seeing anyone come up, so no speakers? We get a, uh, roll call vote on that, please?
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Yates?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Elke?
Aye.
Councilmember Lishay?
Aye.
Councilmember Dickey?
Aye.
Mayor Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Mayor Seven Zero?
All right, is there any, any other discussion on any of the other items?
Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Yates?
Um, as we have passed an economic development plan and we listed that as, as a, as a priority, um, and we're leaning mean, I, I'm, I'm looking at the Jump Start Biz as a, a very, uh, uh, excellent investment, um, for the twenty-five thousand that they're asking, and if they average the four to six businesses of which they've been averaging, and the average small business generates two hundred and fifty thousand, or whatever number you use, and then we get two point six percent hack, that, that is an incredible investment. Um, back to the business model analogy, during, uh, rough times, you don't cut off your marketing budget, or your advertising budget, or your outreach budget, um, and, and these are the kind of investments that return to us because this is tax related. These generate taxes. Um, I'm, I'm, I'm open to discussion, but I'm more along the lines of, of, uh, investing the, the full twenty-five thousand that they're, that they're requesting on that line item.
Any other discussion? Vice Mayor?
I, I agree with, um, what Councilmember, um, Yates has said. For me, I, I need to see a little bit more time and, and a little more results as far as Jump Start. I know they have been successful, I'm, I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with that. But I think I'd like to see them another year before giving them such a substantial increase, especially considering what we're doing in the other departments as far as the reductions and that sort of thing. Um, I completely agree with the, the rationale behind it, but for me, I just need to see, I need to see some more time.
Councilman Brown?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I too agree with, uh, Councilman Yates. I also agree with Councilman, um, yeah. And, but I, I, I say, I'm sorry, but I believe opposed to talking about, uh, increasing it to the full twenty-five thousand, uh, fifteen would be a lot more powerful to me, but before we do this, I've got a question for the town manager. I am following, of course, with, uh, Paul Moods and, and Cecil Councilmember Yates, the Avenue project, and if there is in fact a million six forty, uh, allotted for that, and we do in fact bring it in for, uh, a million four fifty, and there's two hundred thousand dollars, can we not reallocate that to something like what we're trying to pay for today?
Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Brown, the way the, um, motion was given is, is that, that fund balance, that, my now it's up to two million dollars, that's, uh, been accumulated over thirteen years, that right now, we have a million two budget for the Avenue, we think that there's going to be some ad alternates for consideration in that project, we don't really know what that balance is gonna be, but the motion was, was to keep that balance, whatever balance it is, in the downtown for development. If you wanna modify that, you might wanna discuss that further.
Councilwoman Yates?
Thank you. Um, before, when the downtown excise fund was just the downtown fund, we did use, uh, some of it for that, for, remember, even for Lori's salary, half of it. So if the Jump Start Biz can be, uh, i- i- if it can be shown that some of what it's doing is in that downtown area, then indeed, we could use it from the, the balance, the million dollar balance, kind of thing like that, but, um, at this point, this one, since we are talking about, um, cutting almost everything, this Jump, Jump Start Biz forty-five hundred is the same as last year, is that not right?
Correct.
So we would be keeping them whole with what they got last year, by giving the forty-five hundred?
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, um...
Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman?
And to muddy the waters further, uh, the investment that we do with GPEC, and regardless of how you feel about them, they are on a huge outreach, specifically to California, literally to, to bring businesses here. Um, weekly, we get emails of, of, for lack of a better term, hot leads, of literally, all we have to do is call them and, and they say, hey, we're looking for ten thousand square feet, or we're, we're looking for land, whatever, um, to have that as a resource and, and it just be on that list. And we've always talked about having Fountain Hills on that list of, of new businesses coming to Fountain Hills for eighty-eight hundred dollars, and that includes a membership to, uh, CoStar, which they just merged, uh, with LoopNet. And there's some incredible tools to go along with that. I, I would not be for, uh, cutting that budget at all, I think that's money, uh, well spent, I should say, well invested.
Anything else?
Mayor, oh, I think Timmy had her hand up first, babe.
Uh, Mayor, no, you go ahead, uh, I'm polite.
We're so polite, we're never getting any compliments. Um, GPEC to me is, is, is a real difficult one. We've, we've had, we've been paying dues to GPEC for, truly, how long?
Since we incorporated, twenty-three years, twenty-three years.
And, and in theory, I agree wholeheartedly with you, Councilman Yates, but in terms of ROI that would you like to use, um, I haven't seen any ROI. There has been no return on investment over, over twenty-two years. Um, if this council decides to keep our membership with GPEC, I think what we need to do is turn the heat up on GPEC and ask them to get a little more involved in Fountain Hills. Because at this point, the ROI has been basically zero. And they're, they're great at what they do, they, they advocate for the state, they bring in a lot of business that typically doesn't need our profile because they go after the bigger ancillaries. Um, so if we do fund GPEC, um, I, I think somehow, some way, we need to give the message loud and clear, we'd like to see a little more activity in our community, thank you.
And Ken and I recently met with Barry Broom, the head of GPEC, and did exactly that. Told him to stop sending us stuff that we have no, we don't have the amount of square footage for these huge warehouses or huge corporations. We tell him exactly what we're looking for, you know, and the line of what's back, what's bringing to us, uh, IT, uh, smaller, smaller businesses that would actually fit into Fountain Hills. And I know Councilman Yates has been monitoring some of the, uh, leads that we've been getting, so... Unfortunately, we don't have an easy person to do that, so relying on, um, Ken to do some of that, and, um, and Councilman Yates has been taking that on.
All right, so, oh, Mayor, if, if, if they're, if, if they are aligning themselves with our economic development plan, as you suggested, and vice versa, then, then yeah, you know, just give them another year. But as I said, it's been twenty-two years of coming up empty, and add, add that change up, thank you.
Yeah, to be candidly honest, we actually, we sat down with them and we just basically said, if you're not gonna give us anything we can use, then we don't have any use for you, and don't give us a story like it's something opened in Phoenix, that somehow that's just a great benefit to us that we keep paying dues. So they're, they're on notice that if they don't start producing, then this would be it for us. Vice Mayor?
Mayor, I, I, I agree with this assessment, and, but I think after twenty-three years, and, and I know, um, Barry hasn't been, well, I assume he hasn't been with GPEC for twenty-three years. Um, but as, with my business, when I have something that's not produced and not marketing, you know, once, once we say yes, and the dues are paid, well, they've got the check, and whether they produce and give us anything or not, well, we put them on notice. Now it's another discussion next year with the next council, we, you know, we gotta remember this. Um, my understanding, and I hope Steph can correct me if I'm wrong, that if we decided not to pay dues this year, that we could pay them next year, they're not gonna lock us out of GPEC just because we don't pay it one year, is that...
That's correct.
Is that fair to say? I mean, they'll accept our check next year? I mean, uh, uh, probably, more, more likely than not. So, Mayor, just, just for clarity, and, and we've had a lot of discussion, I make a motion that we not pay the GPEC fund for this budget year, for thirteen, fourteen, and that we take the amount of eight thousand eight hundred and forty-four dollars out and use that for the areas. I mean, we're, we're raising this in as it is, if we're not getting ROI on it, we shouldn't be using those, those monies for that. And I think that sends the strongest message, and during the course of this coming year, if Barry knocks on our doors and says, hey, we didn't get the check, you say, well, we haven't gotten a return, what do you got? We, we can still entertain joining GPEC at some later point, but I would suggest that this time, based on everything, that we not do it.
Is there a second? Uh, Councilwoman Hampton, is there any discussion on that?
Madam Mayor.
Um...
I'm sorry, I yield.
Actually, Mayor, I actually do have some questions for you, uh, Cecil, a couple of questions. Um, the, the, um, act of doing this, uh, you know, for eighty-eight hundred dollars, do you see any detriment to us in our standing, or, you know, is this gonna be unnoticed? Or, because, I mean, I've been around them a lot, and, uh, they've been down, they're down the red place, so they, they do, um, represent certain interests that I think do help us, but I don't think we've seen that exact, um, you know, like you say, ROI. So, the, so one question is, um, you know, could this year's OPEC, could this, could, uh, it's looking like eighty-eight hundred dollars to actually be helpful for some of the things we're trying to do? Do you see any damage with that? And also, are you familiar with the ambassador program that they have? Because a lo- uh, several years ago, I kinda, uh, signed up for it, but then I never did it, and I wondered if any added involvement on our part, on your part, um, would increase and make it worth it to spend this money on them. So I don't, I'm not trying to put on a squad, but do you have any idea on any of that?
Madam Mayor, um...
Before, Councilwoman Yates answered, I just wanna answer that, um, this has allowed me to sit in on all their meetings, and at these meetings, I do have direct contact, and I can monitor to make sure that, you know, you know, I mean, now I'm in a position where we, we sat down and we said, you know, this year is it, you know, you, you've gotta start sending us something, and he's agreed that it possibly, uh, we were maybe neglected, or they weren't as, um, he's offered us, uh, his staff for help. Uh, he says, so we've had a released out for his staff, uh, he's offered some help in marketing if we ask for it. He's offered to send someone if we have, um, uh, economic development summit or meeting to have someone come and help coordinate it and give advice to us. We haven't taken advantage, he says, of some of the things that we can do. So if we don't pay this, I guess that was seen out of, um, attending and participating, so just take that as a consideration, too. Not that I need another meeting, and now, go, go ahead, Councilwoman Yates, go ahead, I just...
Thanks, Madam Mayor.
...clarify that.
Um, like, back to the business model, like any good marketing or advertising program, we, you need follow through. I mean, you, you can spend a, a million dollars telling everybody to come and, we're gonna sell you a hamburger, but if you don't have somebody at the door greeting them, or if you don't have the door unlocked, or if you don't have enough staff to serve the people, you just wasted the money. I, I, and, and I mean no disrespect for, for anyone in the past, um, but I know they, they have a decent program, but I don't think we were, were participating to the degree we should've. Um, one thing I will say, just by my participation on this council, I, I have a membership to CoStar, and now that they just, uh, merged with LoopNet, there is an invaluable, uh, tool that they have in finding out what our, uh, average vacancy is, and who owns all the buil- buildings. I know, uh, Mr. Buchanan and I have had these conversations, trying to figure out what buildings are available. That package that comes with this GPEC package gives us access to that. So it, there's just so many tools that have, but I just don't think we were set up to work with them. I, I, in, in answer to your ultimate question, I, I do think there, I mean, it's not gonna be a huge backlash, but, uh, um, when I was in the bar restaurant business, I got mad at my Budweiser rep, and I took it off the tap, and it just sends shockwaves, and I, I was blacklisted for a while, and you don't tell the king of beers, you can't come in, they're gonna get upset. Um, I'm not saying that this guy is Budweiser, but I, I am saying that, I, I think there's some way more value in, in the eighty-eight hundred dollars, it's just we haven't been set up to, to work this, this program. So, um, I know it's been, um, called the question, and, and seconded, but respectfully, I ask you to, uh, uh, rescind your motion.
Mayor, if I may?
Councilwoman Yates?
So, Councilman Yates, have you some more cores been after that, or?
No, I don't want it.
Very, very good. Um, Mayor, if, if I may, and my intent's not to be critical of anything that's been said. Um, I had worked with our previous, um, economic development administrator, and we had this discussion for a couple of years about GPEC and a lack of their visibility. And the last that she was here, she reached out, we did reach out, we did contact them. They did bring a small group of folks, we toured the town, we showed them real estate, we showed them all the vacant businesses, we hooked up with realtor, it was a pretty sophisticated tour. Um, they, they did come, they did see, and we didn't really get much of a buzz, buzz after that. So the notion that we hadn't reached out, that we hadn't coordinated, um, I personally was involved in that, that whole day. Not that I mattered, but I was a set of eyes to indicate as evidence that that did occur. And there, there, just there was just nothing that occurred af- after that, thank you.
Madam Mayor. Again, just one last bit, the, the CoStar package alone, I, I think is worth the eighty-eight hundred dollars, but I, and, and I appreciate what's happened in the past and, and where this is coming from, but I, I, I really don't think this is, this is the time that we wanna cut this line item.
All right, we have a, all right, one more.
I think I like what I'm saying, I just think in deference to what you said, as far as your involvement with them, and, um, a relative small minority, the dues was eighty-eight thousand dollars. I think we could talk a little bit more about it, but I don't think it would behoove us to drop out of GPEC right now.
All right, at this point, I have a motion and a second, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Hampton?
Who says to drop it?
Aye.
Councilmember Lishay?
Aye.
Councilmember Dickey?
Nay.
Councilmember Yates?
Nay.
Vice Mayor Elke?
Aye.
Councilmember Brown?
Nay.
Mayor Kavanaugh?
Nay.
Three to four? Nay.
Better get something this year.
Right, so, what's going on, Ken?
Whatever happened to Jump Start?
Oh, wait, okay.
I think we're still discussing Jump Start.
Oh, we are, what?
Yeah, we haven't...
Okay, let me go to Councilwoman Dickey.
It's not about Jump Start, so...
That's okay.
I wanted to ask about the, um, the, the, uh, on page fifteen and third and four, the, the tourism, uh, talking about being a DMO, a destination marketing organization, and needing a certain amount of the funds to not be administrative. I was, I was wondering what that, if I could get an explanation of that, because it would look like it, too much of it might still be administrative, and I, and I don't, and I don't know for sure, um, how this hundred and fifty-eight thousand would break out on how you'd actually use it. So, um, that's what I wanted to know about, how, how do you get under that, uh, that one twenty-three? How do you get it without going to administrative fund?
Mark, would you like to come up and explain that?
Uh, Mayor, Councilmember Mark McDermott, Director of the Fountain Hills Visitor's Grill. And, uh, what Councilperson Dickey is referring to is a requirement on the part of the state of Arizona in order to apply for funding from them under Proposition Three O Two, which is the original Cardinal Stadium, and it's, it provides funding to tourism, to the Office of Tourism, as a grant program in there for designated destination marketing organizations within Maricopa County. And over the years, they, I happen to have been the, the, uh, Director of AOT when this program was formed, so I know it very well. Uh, and over the years, one of the requirements of the ability to acquire... Uh, and over the years, one of the requirements of the ability to apply for the funds was to be able to show that you have, in your own home community, a marketing budget of at least a certain minimum amount of money, okay? And that number is now at ironically a hundred and three thousand dollars, which is exactly what you have budgeted for the tourism program right now. So, and those funds are not supposed to be administration funds. They're supposed to be marketing budget funds. So, um, not only do we have the, uh, the, the funding that we have coming from the town, but we also have funding coming from the, from the tribe. We also have funding coming from the Chamber of Commerce and, uh, some of the familiar minor income that we have. Um, and then I think the, the key element, so it's, it's simple to say that within our budget, probably the only funds that, that are not used for marketing, essentially, is what might be considered payment, to me, as the Director of, of the program. The rest of the funds are used for marketing, even in the sense of Francesca Carosa's contract with us. She's not a staff person. She's a marketing or public relations agency. One way or the other, we have to contract out for advertising, public relations, website services, and all of those things to have someone do them. And so, um, it, it's just a matter of how you apply the thinking of the funds or the utilization of the funds as to what you consider to be administration and what you don't consider to be administration. You know, really, technically, I'm the only administrative person on the staff. So, the rest of it is, is marketing funding. Okay.
Okay, so Mayor, so Mark, uh, one fifty-eight thousand, you have to basically say a hundred and twenty-three of that is not administrative. Is that how that works?
Hundred, one hundred and three for the state of Arizona.
Well, it says a hundred and twenty-three in the book here, doesn't it?
Mm-hmm, yes. No, I believe the number is one hundred and three. I'm not sure why the book says a hundred and three.
Hmm, requirement for the amount of marketing budget a DMO must have in order to qualify is now a hundred and twenty-three thousand. This marketing budget must be exclusive of, of administrative funds, and then your total budget looks like a hundred and fifty-eight.
The total budget at that time was a hundred and fifty-eight. Since then, the Chamber of Commerce has committed twenty thousand dollars to the budget, to the budget, too, so it's more like a hundred and seventy-eight now. Um-
Maybe we need to know that we're talking about the-
That's probably needs to be revisited, uh, revisited off the side, because I don't have the, I don't have the grant, uh, guidelines with me right now, but it was my understanding that it was a hundred and three thousand, not a hundred and twenty-three thousand to the state.
And this one fifty-eight, excuse me, Mayor, does include the Chamber's twenty? So, maybe we just need to get our, our paper, our papers in order here.
It does, it does or it doesn't include the twenty?
It does. I didn't hear, uh, having I'm just reading.
I, I don't, can I, I'd like to see what you've got there. Don't worry about it.
Oh, thank you.
Uh, um, that, that would, that's gonna be my error, if it says a hundred and twenty-three, because that was under my executive report. So, that'd be my error.
Page fifteen to thirty-four.
Yes. I remember an email from you, and I, I thought that said a hundred and three.
Yes.
On the email. I didn't bring it. I think you sent everyone an email on that.
I can go back and check, but I don't have the document with me right now, so I can't, I, I can't say for sure. So, the budget of a hundred and fifty-eight thousand is still a hundred and three thousand anticipated from the town, thirty thousand, which is level funding, anticipated for the tribe. Um, prior information, we've applied for fifty thousand. Hopefully, we might get a little bit more from them. The Chamber's committed twenty thousand. There would be, essentially, if we are, if we are able to go ahead and apply to the state, which we will do, and are in the process of doing it, the application will be due, uh, in a couple of weeks, um, that would be, that would represent about another twenty thousand dollars in, in revenue, such as it does this year. So, uh, that's an element that's missing from, from this lineup of, of revenue sources is the state's twenty thousand dollars that would be coming from the profits of the 302 grant. Okay.
Any other questions for Mark?
Yeah.
Break this down.
Um, Mayor, if I may. Mark, uh, thank you for that, 'cause that was kinda where I was going next. So, basically, this criteria allows you to apply for 302 funds?
Yes.
Okay, and I think last year, looking at the contract from last year, that was close to twenty thousand.
Eighteen thousand and some.
Is that the maximum you can apply for?
Yeah, we, absolutely. It's based on a formula that is directly related to the hotel sales tax, or hotel room, uh, gross ho- gross sales and hotel rooms in, in your community. So, obviously, us being a small community with very small gross hotel sales, unfortunately, um, the remission back to us is the smallest of all the communities in Maricopa County. And, and I'm responsible for that, because I'm the guy that set the formula. Now, I see that it's kinda, it's kinda backwards. Um, I wish the smaller communities could have an opportunity to at least get a minimum, you know, one percent or something like that of the total pot, which is somewhere around five million dollars. But, uh, it's one of those formulas where the rich get richer. The big, the big CBDs in Phoenix and Scottsdale get the biggest chunks of money, and the little communities get a pit to store with, unfortunately.
So, Mark, if you're successful at that, then that would bring your, your, uh, the Fountain Hills, Fort McDowell tourism, uh, up to about, um, one seventy-eight?
Seventy-five, yes.
Close to where you were last year.
Exactly, exactly.
All right, thank, thank you.
That's what we're hoping to accomplish.
Vice Mayor.
Mark, just a quick question for you. I remember looking through you for the Chambers contributing, uh, twenty thousand dollars towards, uh, the tourism. Um, and in some of the materials, I saw that it was reflected as, I think it was the Chambers' report, it reflected as a rollover. Do you remember it being characterized as a rollover?
In previous years, yeah, we had, we've been able to-
Per carry forward, excuse me.
Yeah, carry forward. In previous years, we've been able to achieve a carry forward because of uncertainty with regards to funding, uh, covering, uh, expenses during the first or second, uh, during the first month in particular, before we received the town funds and, and so forth and so on. We've, we've, we've in the past carried over funds. As the budget has consistently decreased, I'm afraid, over the past couple of years, we're no longer in a position where we can carry over funds. So, the Chamber has now found a way, just a way, organization that Mr. Farrar did, to, to be able to come up with approximately twenty thousand dollars, which at least would give us that money to begin the fiscal year with, to get by with for that first month.
Okay, so, just on the current, the carry forward that we're talking about is not funded, you received from the town last year, or from-
That we won't use.
Prop 302 or anything like that.
Right, exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, Mayor, if I may. Mark, you just, you just stated the Chamber provided the twenty thousand dollars to help you get started. I need to know that this twenty thousand dollars is committed to your budget.
This twenty thousand dollars is committed to the budget. That's the first. As long as it gets approved by the Chamber Board tomorrow, yes.
Okay, yeah, so that's-
Or next Wednesday, yeah. Yeah, there should be no problem.
That distinguishes it from the carryover then, so there's-
Yes, exactly.
The Chambers, twenty thousand dollars, skin in the game, basically.
Good way to put it.
All right, thank you.
Anything else for Mark?
Ma- Mayor, members of the council, I believe there was, um, a proposal, uh, of, of the program itself, a discussion of the program. Did you wanna be able to take that time and do it?
Um, if it's council's pleasure, or we could do it separately, or individually, or however you might wanna do it.
That's fine. Do you wanna do it?
Council Frog, if-
Sure, go ahead.
Julie, do you wanna help with, uh, bringing the program up?
One of the things councils always ask, and I've heard the term already used tonight in terms of economic development and tourism, is ROI, return on investment. And it's, it's very difficult in tourism, as I've explained a couple of times to you, um, in previous sessions in front of you, that, uh, you know, unless we can actually count bodies coming into town and know that they came as a direct result of our efforts, you, you, you can't, you can't really pinpoint a, an exact ROI to the efforts of tourism, unless, of course, you're a big enough agency, such as the case in, in most larger communities, where you're booking conventions and meetings, and you know exactly how many people came through as a result of you booking those conventions and meetings and related attendance and room nights and so forth and so on. Um, we think we've come up with a, with a way to be able to start to get at that this, um, uh, this year in terms of at least better measurement of the effectiveness of our advertising by going almost, almost essentially all digital, all online, uh, all through, uh, uh, resources that are now available and have evolved over the past couple of years, past few years in the tourism industry, as they have in every industry. So, so we've reached out to a firm that I know and asked them to make, make a, a final proposal, which, uh, uh, we're anticipating incorporating into our program for this year, uh, moving some funds around from things we've done in the past, and especially in the past year, where we spent some money on sponsorship to bring a big connection to town, town that was just here in terms of the International Trail Symposium, as well as spending money on creating the new cycle of events and so forth. This is all, uh, in our intention to get into direct marketing for, uh, for the destination. And it, this is a, a program outline. We're not into the nitty-gritty of exactly where we're gonna place our online advertising or, or, you know, or, or so forth, but it would just help you understand, basically, the direction we're taking, all of which is measurable, because it relates to items that'll be marketing our destination online, that folks, if they're interested, can click on those items, click through our website, and all of that is measurable through, uh, analytics, Google Analytics, and other, and other things. Gives us then the opportunity to create, um, better refined lists for outreach, marketing, and so forth and so on. So, the goals and objectives of this plan basically are, and I'll try to keep this brief, and you can, you can take a look at it yourselves and call me with any questions you may have, but, um, obviously, we'd be reaching out with digital, uh, ad campaigns targeted, uh, using well-known outlets such as Google, Yahoo, Bing, Facebook. Not saying all of those. We're gonna call through and figure out which ones, sit down with these folks, do some research, and figure out which ones we're going to use, utilize, and then, and then place our advertising accordingly. And then, uh, analyzing and, and targeting in, of a key demographic, as well as geographic, uh, audiences or markets that we will reach out to, uh, that represent the best visitors for Fountain Hills and, and find the vehicles, online vehicles, to get their attention online, and hopefully get them to respond by clicking on, clicking over to our website and learning more about the destination. Uh, we think it's very important to, the opportunity here is, the key here is the implementation of tracking and reporting mechanisms to measure the activity and then build beautiful database prospects and sponsors and partners. So, this gives us the opportunity to get back to you and say, "Okay, what's the ROI? We don't know exactly how many people came yet, but we're getting at it. At least we know how many people responded." And as we continue to, to get into, as a customer relations component to this, that we can get into doing follow-up and actually trying to find out if people did come here as a result. We'd like to be able to evolve into that. And also, part of what those, what this, uh, the whole program will, 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 uh, entail will be ongoing enhancement and content management of our experience fountainhills.org website, SEO. You've heard all the terms before, as well as visitor engagement and revenue opportunities. Um, will be, the, again, highly targeted campaigns that this agency will be helping us with will be, be obvious, those, those types of folks that do our, that we know already come here to Fountain Hills, uh, golfers, mountain bikers, uh, hikers, hikers, and runners, and weekend trippers, and holiday travelers, and that, holiday guides, uh, event travelers. Uh, it is not specifically noted there, but that really falls into your weekend trippers and your family activities and guides and so forth. Um, as well as statewide travelers, uh, local and regional guides related to that, shoppers, and so forth and so on. Those are the base, that's, that's basically what we're talking about in terms of the type of targeted audiences we'll be, we'll be aiming our, our channel marketing up at that. Um, and these can also be integrated with offline media. Offline media means, obviously, traditional print media, or radio, or whatever it may be, other than the online stuff. Uh, pending budget and pricing limitations, as always. Um, then comes the, a page about the analysis and, and on, and then more refined targeting as a result of analysis. Uh, the analysis that needs to be done right up front is a deeper look into, uh, some of the existing data as to where we're, uh, list that we have, such as the Chamber maintains list of all the people that come into the visitor center, where, where they've all come from. We can reach out to our hotels, and to our golf courses, and other businesses, and get information from them on the demographics of their customers, if not their lists, the lists themselves. Some of them are willing to provide lists, some of them are not. But we'll be doing more of that. And then reorganizing the data into more targeted marketing lists that we can reach out with them, again, all, mostly all digital and online, A because it's less expensive, gives us broader exposure, and it's more measurable. And then, uh, that, place it into the tactics and systems to add to and build new lists and so forth, and the targeting marketing activities such as, uh, direct, uh, email outreach, email blasts, and so forth and so on, um, based on the interest. And then we get in tracking, reporting, and automation. You've all heard of Google Analytics. It's probably the, it's like the, uh, the key analytic tool out there, but there are other ways to report on the use of activities that we're doing on URLs, uh, not only those we advertise on, but those we also have ongoing marketing programs with, such as TripAdvisor, uh, the Key Arizona statewide, uh, site, um, and other such, uh, uh, websites and that. We can do a better job, I think, of getting the data analyzed from those and, and plugged into, um, you know, uh, reporting, and then refining our campaigns accordingly. And then this is where we get a little bit into what's called, uh, customer relationship marketing and marketing automation, uh, system to, to tra- actually track visitor activity and, uh, the execution of ongoing nurturing, uh, and ongoing nurturing of campaigns to drive engagement. So, this is something that is, we've not had the sophistication or the strategy capability to be able to do until we can bring in folks with ex- expertise to do this. And now, we, we think we've found the people that can do this. They'll help us with our website enhancement and content. That's, you know, we basically do that ourselves in-house with, with our webmaster right now, but we can get some additional input. And one of the things that would be added to this slide would be, we, we are investigating with our, our local, um, travel services company, Arizona Trails. They have the ability to, to create packages with the hotels and golf courses. They do that already. We're looking to be able to plug into this website a package tour booking mechanism, so we can actually book packages right through our website. And that's another measurement standard that we can report back to, to you all in terms of return on investment, uh, as to what's, you know, what's been generated by the, by the funds being spent in the marketing. So, sort of booking meetings and conventions, which we do on a sporadic basis, usually in concert with, with the, the folks at the Radisson in Fort McDowell, 'cause that's the, the principal meeting space in our community, uh, our joint community, anyway. This will give us the opportunity to start booking some packages and have a measurable standard there as well to be able to, to utilize. Um, okay, this is just basically a re- reiteration of the deliverables of the, of the previous slides, uh, how they'll do it in a one, two, three phase approach. Don't need to really delve into that too deeply with your agent now. And then how they would see, uh, the budget breaking down and they're proposing fifty thousand dollars, uh, for this first year startup of this program. Um, thirty, thirty percent of it, the, the, the largest percentage, uh, as it should be, is going into the actual media buying and placement, but there has to be time and effort spent on campaign and content creation, on strategy and account management, on the data analysis and database building. And you can, you can see the elements that go into that, so the, the smaller numbers of ten percent in each of those areas. And that concludes the report. So, I, um, oh, sorry, Mayor.
No, I was gonna say, thank you.
Okay.
Uh, any questions on the presentation for Mark? And other questions for Mark?
It really represents a, a key migration from, from, from a heavy, uh, a, a, a heavy emphasis on print advertising, even much more, much more digital, measurable, and hopefully then results oriented in terms of ROI that we can slide to you, okay? All right, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Vice Mayor.
Mayor, I think, I think that probably some reading right here, did that, uh, conclude all of those items in the economic development or in this particular section?
Same.
Y- yes.
Ken, anything else to cover in the administration? Councilman Hanson.
Um, just quickly back to the event marketing, the spring and summer for twenty-five thousand dollars. Do we have any ideas of what we're envisioning that for? And I guess I'm thinking about when, um, with the Cyclovia event. I believe the town contributed-
Yes, we did.
...dollars to that. So, is that the type of thing that, that money is-
Yes.
Looking at?
Yes, Councilwoman Hanson.
Any other questions, Councilwoman Davidson?
Thank you, Mayor. So, the, the way this is laid out right now, if we went ahead and just said, you know, except for the thirty thousand, at least just sort of switched around, I guess what I would want to ask is that if something changes, like, so it says available to fund remaining components of economic development plan now is a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. So, as we move on, if we just say, "Okay, this," because that doesn't mean that if something else doesn't come up along the way, that it wouldn't go in with these, with, it couldn't possibly be added back in because there's that money in there. I looked at, you know, this is the tourism, but this, this is saying, this is acting like a hundred and three thousand is the only amount to spend on tourism. You could look at this and say retail attraction strategy is kind of the same as business attraction strategy. So, until we know what that economic development plan's gonna be and obviously it's kind of a work in progress, I just wanna be clear that if we make motion and we go through with this, that other things will be added to this because they're unknown right now. And so, I just wanted to make sure that that's everybody else is understanding also, we've got the amount, but not the details. And even that event, these events may not happen, so that still gives you, you know, money that could possibly be used for another aspect of economic development, but this is a good framework to get started. Is that the understanding?
Are you, are you talking about the event marketing line?
The whole, this whole page, like, if we're gonna go, move ahead now and start making motions or anything, do you understand what I mean?
Let me ask you how I move, Councilwoman Dickie. If I understood the comment is that the hundred and twenty is, is, it could be used for all of those strategies depending on what the priorities, how those are going to be. Because they have to be determined at this point in time, as you said, they're in motion. We had a three, almost a four hour session with fact that the council directed us to do to talk about approach on that last night. So, and we're supposed to be bringing that approach back to the council for approval. But that, if, if the approach is accepted, then you start talking about how do you, which strategies you start looking at.
Thank you.
Matty, ma'am?
Yes.
Not to beat this in the ground, but back to the Jump Start Biz, I would like to make a motion that we accept their, their ask of twenty-five thousand and take the twenty thousand five hundred from the available to fund remaining components of economic development plan.
You have a motion to second?
I'll rescind the motion.
Okay. Uh, Councilwoman Hanson?
Excuse me, I just wanted to jump off something that you just said too, because later on in a subsequent division, we're talking about the theater contract. And I think in the presentation that we received from them, there, a very good case was made that that is another element of tourism and attracting people to town. So, that kind of seems to kind of cover, you know, two different things, the community services, but economic development as well.
Does this, Councilwoman accept, Council members accept that concept, yes?
So, Mayor, what would you like a motion to be? How would you, how would you suggest about?
Except, well, except for the, except for the food bank that we pulled out, it looks like everything else is still in there, so we need a motion to accept the presentation for the administration as presented.
So, move.
And a second? Second? Roll call, please.
And this is with the flexibility that we've been talking about.
Yes.
I'm sorry, clarification?
Yes.
That's, the flexibility, I'm sorry. Was that, was that, was that, was that moving that, that thirty thousand three fifty up to the forty percent money? That's already happened.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so what's the other flexibility we're talking about, what do you think?
What we just said.
What? That's what I'm asking, what, what we just said?
All right, Councilwoman Dixon?
Say it again.
Mayor, thank you. Basically, we're just saying that the nine, the hundred and twenty thousand dollars, there are gonna be other things that come along that may fit into economic development or we may not spend all the money, the twenty-five thousand on event marketing. So, basically, we're accepting this the way it looks, except the thirty thousand is up with the downtown strategy. So, that's the flexibility.
Yeah, so to, so to respond to the comments from Councilwoman Hanson, yes, there is flexibility.
Well, I'm using my example of the theater.
Okay.
Should the council accept that? Madam, I agree.
Again, to clarify, so we're just voting on the economic development program section?
We're vote, we're voting on the administration section.
The whole administration section.
As minus the food bank which we voted on separately. And I guess-
Which we increased.
Mm-hmm, right.
Thank you, Mayor.
Councilwoman Brown?
I will ask the same question. Now, we have a five percent increase in salary in finance. And if we vote on this and approve this, are we still going to have the opportunity to discuss that five percent?
Yes, because that's, as I mentioned at the beginning with the highlights and the agenda, personnel is the last area of discussion that we'll talk and approve.
Thank you.
If there's no further discussion, we will call for the vote. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Brown?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Elke?
Aye.
Councilwoman Wilkins?
Aye.
Councilwoman Beatty?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hanson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dickie?
Aye.
Mayor Cadmore?
Aye.
Mayor Seven Zero?
Okay, at this time, we've been going over two hours, so I'm gonna call for a ten minute break.
How far do we wanna get tonight? What, can we kind of set a goal on like a time limit here of how late we are expecting to go?
That's up to the discretion of the council. If you wanna go through the development services and leave community services and the rest of it for the, for Monday, we can, we can do that. You can stay here till midnight.
Okay.
We're, we're ready.
We're gonna be here again tomorrow night.
All right, let's, all right, we've got a ten minute break and then we can talk about that when we get back. Ah, this is good. Well? Can we do it? I don't know. Me too. Need more water?
I know. My own job. My whole continues. Above it would get up, but you don't want it like this.
One chart, so we were up over fifteen, seventeen million in general fund, we're on thirteen now.
Okay.
So, that's, that's the main thing, does it remain effective in terms of revenue still way down?
No. And that's the other part of, part of your question, yes, to sit in funding for another core service and further, further and cause, uh, a little, cause a little more pain. Further cutting the budget.
There's a doctor that was my colleague, Chris Allen, and, um, he had a rat, like a bug. And, and not, still not there. And then-
It's kind of a problem, the overriding thing is the last.
And, 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 and one night he had a lamb head.
Oh, yeah.
Lamb head.
Red and chocolate.
Red and chocolate, lamb's chocolate.
Part of the tent family, the tent family owned a lot of camera all over.
Oh.
You know, the-
I think you can get to that one, right?
That's the other, that's the wrong, that's like you said. Everyone thought he was-
Okay, we're back. All right, um, so the question that Councilwoman Hanson asked before, we took the break with, how far do we wanna go? Um, you wanna start on development services and see how quickly we can get through that? Vice Mayor, is that a suggestion?
I, I would suggest if we can get through the next two, we've got development services and then we've got community services, if we can get through those two and then perhaps after that adjourn for the evening.
So, that's good with everybody? Let's see how long maybe we can get right through the development services quickly, but we'll see. Okay, ten.
Okay, I remember the council. Development services, as you can see by the organizational chart, the dark blue again are full-time employees, the lime green are, are part-time and the white blue is contract. Development services is one million eight hundred and forty-three thousand five hundred and forty dollars. It's eight point two percent less than last year, last fiscal year. The departments include streets, planning, building, safety, code enforcement, stormwater, environmental services, engineering, facilities, mapping and graphics. Again, the highlights of the department responsible for six eighty WR dams, solid waste recycling contract administration, seven hundred acres of wash maintenance, maintenance of ten owned town, towns, owned buildings, as well as fifteen capital projects that are, should they be approved by the council, it'll be the responsibility for development services to administer. As you can see from comparison from the previous fiscal year to the current fiscal year, you can see the differences. I won't go into those unless any of the council members should have any questions regarding any of those, those departments that are there. The one that's not showing on there is the street department and that's the next graph. I'll go into depth on that. And the development services director is here and/or Julie and I to answer any questions you might have with respect to any of these divisions.
Very nice, but expect you to fall out there with a over, showing the depth.
What he's doing is trying to figure out how to seal all those cracks and we're, we're gonna talk about that tomorrow night, unfortunately. Zone six.
Okay. You wanna go on?
Okay, street department, two million three hundred and twenty thousand, nine hundred and seventy-three dollars, eleven percent up. It funds the street divisions, there's four times full-time equivalent employees, maintain three hundred and ninety lane miles. Remember, there's different, four lanes and there's two lanes, so when you add them all up, three hundred and ninety lane miles, three and a half million square yards of asphalt in this community and as well as being responsible for sixty-eight acres of mediums. As you can see with the various areas within the HERF and the street HERF is the highway user revenue fund, street department and, that it's funded by. As you can see, the budget and how it's broken down in the comparison from fiscal year thirteen to fiscal year fourteen. As you know, that in this budget, there is two million dollars that is budgeted for pavement management, which, as I mentioned previously, goes toward micro-surfacing or- As you know, that in this budget, there is two million dollars that is budgeted for pavement management, which, um, as I mentioned previously, goes toward, um, micro-surfacing, or, um, which looks like a flowery field, of, uh, Fountain Hills, Fountain Hills Boulevard, and, um, some, uh, work on, um, street repair, um, on, um, say, say Boulevard, portions of that. And that's what the, um, is programmed for the next fiscal year.
Uh, Mayor, the, uh, Paul, the traffic signals, or Paul doesn't have to do it, but the, um, how many signals are, um, do we have? And are we getting into a, a, um, different kind of technology where we don't need to have so much, uh, annual maintenance on them? Sorry, I had to, I believe you, Paul.
Um, Mayor, Councilmember Dickey, we, we have thirteen traffic signals in town, and we are upgrading technologies as they do get better and better, but we do have to do certain maintenance and testing, um, at certain intervals, just to meet the, the standards that are out there, in case there is an accident, to make sure everything, we have to go in, it's called conflict monitoring, to make sure the signal's running properly, so there are, there is maintenance that is required no matter what.
You can ask for Paul, right now, okay. Ten? That's it, okay?
Development Services.
All right, any questions on streets, planning, building, any of these things we just went over? Any other questions? No, hearing none? Can I ask for a motion?
Mayor, um, I move to accept the, to approve the development service budget as presented by staff.
Mayor's second.
Any other discussions, is, are there any speaker cards? No, ma'am. Okay, then, Roll Call vote, please.
Councilmember eight?
Aye.
Councilmember Dickey?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Okay.
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Elton?
Aye.
Councilmember Louis J?
Aye.
Mayor Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Mayor Seven Zero?
Okay, ten?
Mayor Kavanaugh, members of council, community services, core service, as you can see by the organization, the dark blue again are the, uh, full-time, the, the lime green are the part-time. Two million one hundred ninety-nine thousand eighty-three dollars, which is down about one point two percent, um, for the activities of parks, trails, community center recreation programs, senior programs, and home-delivered meals. About a hundred and eight, a hundred and sixteen acres of parks, seven hundred forty acres of open space, ten miles of trails. We have arts and culture, we have a youth program, um, fee for service, and, uh, community center bond payment, um, that highlights the, the department. As you can see in the, the, the division, recreation, um, parks, community center operations, senior services, um, you have one point two percent difference. For that, uh, equivalent, down, uh, one, one position due to the pavement management adjustment, um, to twenty, um, full, twenty point one eight, um, FTE. That's, um, budgeted for fiscal year fourteen. With respect to that, there is a fee for service contract for Fountain Hills, uh, Boys and Girls Club. Request for eighty, uh, staff recommendation for forty. Also, Fountain Hills Theater, um, Community Theater, seventy thousand two forty, and a recommendation thirty-six one twenty. And that would be community services.
Okay, I'll stop right there, because we think we have a speaker card?
No, this is one of the contracts, DJ Lot, the Boys and Girls Club, who wanted to make his presentation.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, uh, councilmembers, thank you for the opportunity to present tonight. My name is DJ Lot, I am the branch director for the Boys and Girls Club here in Fountain Hills. In front of you, hopefully you have received the letter, uh, addressed to Mayor Kavanaugh and to several of councilmembers from our CEO, Steve Davidson, that was submitted to be included in your packet, so I hope you have received that. And the letter of support from, uh, the Fountain Hills Rotary Club, that was also submitted. I have, uh, another letter that I didn't receive prior to yesterday, uh, from, it's a letter of support from the Chair of the Yabba P' Nation, I'm sorry, Fort McDowell Nation, um, offering their support for, for our program as well. I'll submit that, uh, in a second. So, the Boys and Girls Club historically received a hundred thousand dollars from the town. Just two years ago, that was cut to eighty thousand dollars. The club has served the community since nineteen ninety-six. It, our club has, has absorbed town programs, specifically the youth basketball program, flag football program, programs that the rest department used to provide, freeing up town resources. Uh, the Boys and Girls Club subsidizes the operations at our, the key branch here in Fountain Hills, with funding secured mostly from outside of Fountain Hills. Our club provides much-needed opportunities, a variety of programs to town youth. Uh, we have demo, demonstrable impact and success in our community, a cut in the funding threatens this positive impact. Currently, we have seven hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars in expenses. We are able to raise four hundred and eighty-three thousand for program fees. That leaves about two hundred and eighty thousand that we have to make up to fundraising. I know the mayor personally has been to one of our fundraisers, and, and a couple of our fundraisers, uh, and several others may have as well. I think the organization, Boys and Girls Clubs of Greater South, does a tremendous job at exercising its, uh, fundraising might to do all the fundraisings that we can. And, uh, two hundred thousand, in addition to the, to the, uh, four hundred and fifty, eighty-three thousand that we are a, able to raise, is a hefty bit. Uh, we have received the eighty thousand from the town of Fountain Hills to supplement that. Those programs are for the academic success, which include just basic homework, help tutoring, uh, Money Matters, teaching kids about the basics of money, our junior staff career launch, job readiness program. We teach kids to have a good moral compass, about good character and citizenship. We have what's called a leaders and training program, where we take eleven to thirteen-year-olds, get them ready to work. We teach them that you need to be prepared to go into the workplace, you need to dress differently, you need to act differently, and we give them the opportunity to do job training over the summer. They volunteer at the club as assistants to us. We also have the Torch Club Leadership Program for tweens, and our Keystone Club, which is our, uh, key, uh, leadership program for teens, is actually the interact club for the local rotary here in town. We do a lot of SMART moves prevention training. SMART is an acronym, it stands for Skills Mastering Resistance Training. We teach a lot of resistance skills to underage drinking, uh, stopping the use of, uh, alcohol, tobacco, and other drugs, and premature, premature sexual activity. We also talk about healthy habits and teaching our kids the importance of proper nutrition, and just being active. In our homework room, for example, uh, it is a voluntary program. If you've been to our club, it is one of the busiest rooms. Most people don't like, most kids, you know, fight against homework. Not at our club, it's, it is a busy room. There's kids sitting on the floor because all the table and desk space is used up. It's an effective program because ninety-three percent of our members who attend, at least one or more, or ninety-three percent of our members who all attend our club, attend hour hour once a week. Eighty-four percent of those say it's helped them improve their grades. Ninety-three percent say their future grades will be As and Bs. It really allows us to focus on academic success, one of the areas we, we, we highlight. In our good tech and citizenship, we really try, try to focus on service and teaching service to our kids, and that service is really about giving without expecting in return. Our kids, I think, are getting it, and they're getting it at a young age. The community service projects they've been involved in are Halloween in the Hills. We had our Thanksgiving dinner, first annual Thanksgiving dinner this past Thanksgiving, where over a hundred families were served in our club. We've, we've been involved in the railroad cleaning, um, repainting the Sojourner Center, uh, helping out at the fifth store, um, helping at the art festivals, uh, both in the fall and the spring here in Fountain Hills, and also with, uh, uh, the Pride Youth Community Center. Um, that really concludes my presentation. I want to share that I feel the, uh, the club is a tremendous asset to the community. I've been here for sixteen months in this position. I vowed then, when I came, to make our branch the best branch in the country. I think we are well on our way to become the best branch in the country. I think a cut in funding really undermines our efforts to do so. It's a fifty percent cut in funding, and it's hard to understand. I ask that you reconsider. We actually submitted a request for a hundred thousand, not eighty thousand. Eighty thousand was what our current contract is. We are still requesting the hundred thousand. I'm available for questions, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I, uh, speaker card?
Um, Val Sasso did ask that her, her presentation be shown.
Okay.
Thank you, on behalf of myself and the board of directors, staff, and all the patients of Fountain Hills Theater for giving us the opportunity to once again address the council and the citizens of Fountain Hills. The thrust of this presentation is to demonstrate the economic value and vitality that the Fountain Hills Theater brings to our community. There are many interesting facts about myself and your theater that you may not know. We've been part of this community for twenty-seven years, initially performing at Nishala Mountain School. With a degree in teaching drama, a childhood filled with art, music, and theater, which was an invaluable gift, and three young children, and enough family's support to move mountains, I began working passionately to establish a reputable theater in our small community. We weren't even a town yet. Now, I have ten grandchildren, and we have a highly respected theater right here in Fountain Hills. In nineteen eighty-nine, I was one of twenty citizens honored for volunteer service to Fountain Hills. I also had the honor of being named by Fulton Holmes and the Arizona Diamondbacks as a hometown hero, and was interviewed for a piece that aired on May second, two thousand and four, after the D-Back played the Phillies during a segment called Slam Hardball. In two thousand and four, I was one of the first inductees to the Hall of Fame. I've been honored twice, once in two thousand and once in two thousand and three, for an Arizoni Outstanding Contribution Award. There's only one of these given out each year, for my work in the arts and cultural development in Arizona, as well as for my three years as the treasurer and two years as executive director of the Arizoni Board. My two years on the board of the AFTMP, which is the Arizona Film Theater and Television, established a film festival in Arizona. My relationship with past mayors and council has always been honest and open, ever since John Cattillo, our first man. Our beloved town manager, Paul Norton, was one of, a great man, who often sat in our rehearsals while his daughters developed confidence participating in our shows, workshops, and camps. Community leaders, service clubs, and many residents recognize the work Fountain Hills Theater has done over the years, and I value the friendships that I have been blessed with. The visibility of Fountain Hills Theater in our town was ever-present, and that visibility spread into the greater Phoenix area. People began to realize that there was a beautiful town over the hills. We have organized park entertainment for the Fourth of July. We've sung at trade shows, great fairs, fountain festivals, civic associations, and anywhere there was a gathering. We have spoken to or entertained for almost every service club in town. For three consecutive years, we directed and provided expertise for the Fort McDowell Royalty Pageant and Appreciation Day. We have participated in every Thanksgiving parade since nineteen eighty-six. Around nineteen eighty-nine, one of our early residents, Mary Wood, initiated her Woody Awards to support the theater. Mike Archibald made the wooden wall plaque. Many Fountain Hills traditions began with the enthusiasm of the theater. Our volunteers created, installed, and maintained the first Christmas displays on the Avenue of the Fountain, which were used for many years and began a tradition. Working with the Sunset Kuanas, we did the artwork and provided manpower for the first Stanford workshop. We directed the early holiday entertainment with the community's follies, which involved everyone from the town council, schools, clubs, churches, all performing their own special segments. We started the haunted house at the Halloween carnival, which operated for many years. The theater donated the glass display cases and mannequins to the First River of Time Museum when it was in a trailer at Fountain Park. Our association with the chamber goes back to the first executive director, Terry Stavison, who realized back then that the value of economic and quality of life that the theater brings to this town. We've been a member since nineteen ninety. I have the privilege of being a spokesperson in the nineteen ninety-two, uh, on a radio spot for Fountain Festival, and again, in nineteen ninety-three, when I narrated and performed in the first video produced for business growth. We were performed at Chamber Breakfast, and, uh, dressing Frank as a lightest Christmas tree was a hoot. In two thousand and seven, Fountain Hills Theater was the recipient of the Nonprofit of the Year Award. Over the years, we have worked with the schools, providing expertise, equipment, costumes, and actors for whatever the need arose. Our reputation for honesty, quality, and diverse programs has caught the attention of many fine corporations and foundations that help support our mission. Companies that would not invest in the organization did they not believe in or see the value in it. It is with deep appreciation that we acknowledge and rely on them, as well as the town contracts and the community support we receive from service clubs and dual math members. In two thousand and three, a group of us, with the help of the high school media club, submitted a promo to the view, to bring focus to Fountain Hills and the Fountain Hills Theater. We were among three finalists for the award. Since nineteen ninety-two, the population of Fountain Hills has grown, gressed, and grown again. Fountain Hills Theater has mirrored that growth, which would not have happened if we were not a quality theater company providing outstanding programs. From humble beginnings and love for the arts and our town, Fountain Hills Theater has become an acclaimed asset to this community. Viewing budget data from two hundred and fifty-two arts organizations, you can see that a majority of the groups operate with under one hundred thousand dollars per year. Fountain Hills Theater, with a budget of over six hundred thousand dollars per year, is in an elite category, contain, containing very few groups. The higher budgets reflect large organizations, like the Phoenix Ballet, the Phoenix Symphony, museums, and so on. The Arizona Commission on the Arts has described Fountain Hills Theater as a non-profit theater with the budget, staff, and programs equal or superior to professional companies in Arizona. Through commitment, sacrifice, we have brought statewide recognition to our town as a community that nurtures, supports, and respects the value of having a stable arts organization as a source of pride and class. Fountain Hills should be proud and grateful that Fountain Hills Theater is safe in this community. Studies have shown that the arts enrich not only Arizona lives, but also their economy. This applies to Fountain Hills as well. In two thousand and thirteen, the town council outlined a plan with criteria that defines economic development. They include culture, tourism, business attraction, and business retention. The following slides will demonstrate how Fountain Hill Theater fits these criteria. The first criteria is culture. Fountain Hill Theater produces between sixteen and eighteen shows per year. Our productions offer an array of genres that give patrons a choice for their entertainment Fountain Hill Theater provo- provides the only performing arts in our town on a regular basis. We also provide an arena for art education, volunteerism, safe haven for kids, and statewide recognition with over one hundred and fifty Arizoni Awards of Excellence to our credit. Tourism. Fountain Hill Theater does a year-round drawing visitors every weekend and throughout the week for classes and rehearsals. We are consistent tourist draw, and our participants regularly use our town services. Nearly twenty thousand people attend productions annually. A database of active actors and students is seven hundred and sixty. A high percentage of our audience come from outside Fountain Hills. An email survey shows that over fifty percent of a random sampling of people who come to Fountain Hills because of Fountain Hill Theater utilize restaurants, gas stations, and retail Fountain Hill Theater's webpage received over three million hits last year. The theater is visible on all social media. Tickets are sold online through Gold Star and Click for Picks. We had regular participation in the Get Out Theater Expo, spotlighting theater companies throughout Arizona. It is our belief that anything of quality that brings people to our town and keeps bringing them back is contributing to economic development. Fountain Hill Theater has been used regularly in realtor and chamber literature as an asset to Fountain Hills. We are an economic lure for businesses and residents alike. A vital community that supports and encourages the arts of all ages, levels, is an attraction to people moving here and building a business in Fountain Hills. Fountain Hills has a very special energy and spectacular view. By directing the town's purpose and identity, encouraging the arts as an economic driver is a strong first step towards attracting a variety of businesses and artisans to our Many studies have been made regarding the economic impact of the arts. The next few slides are highlights from websites that support the value of the arts in economic development. The National Governors Association study shows how nationwide governors and lawmakers are putting programs and policies in place, using art, culture, and design to enhance economic growth. Web links are available for your convenience. The Cultural Data Project, launched in two thousand and eleven, uses data contributed by two hundred and nineteen Arizona nonprofit arts and cultural organizations to recognize the economic impact of the arts. The report cites business, employment, expenses, and revenues generated in the arts industry benefiting Arizona. The Arizona Commission on the Arts released a study addressing economic impact and how rural communities are revitalized. Arizona residents and businesses invest time, material assets, and intellectual capital in our state, and expect access to artistic and cultural amenities for their families and employees. The Arts and Economic Prosperity Calculator. This link allows the user to insert specific data pertaining to their community to obtain the impact of nonprofit arts and cultural organizations and their audiences. Fountain Hills is a community of less than fifty thousand people. Fountain Hill Theater's total expenses of six hundred and seven thousand dollars have budgeted. Fountain Hill Theater's attendance is approximately twenty thousand. Based on this, the results are that with the theater's expenditures of six oh seven thousand, audience expenditures would be around five hundred and sixty-five, making a total industry impact of a, a million dollars, one million, one hundred and seventy-two. As far as jobs are concerned, full-time equivalent jobs, the theater with the volunteers and the part-timers, they have seventeen. Audience members, time they put in, fourteen point eight. Total industry impact is thirty-one point eight, full-time equivalent jobs. Local government revenue, seventeen thousand, nine hundred and nineteen from the theater, twenty-three, six oh three from the audiences, making it a total industry impact of forty-one thousand, five hundred and twenty-two, uh, revenue to the local government. Quite an interesting study, and, uh, the, it pertains directly to Fountain Hills. Fountain Hill Theater offers opportunities to become involved through volunteering, board participation, theater trips, education, performance, fundraising. All of these factors provide business owners and their families with a sense of ownership in a community. Fountain Hills needs to remain vital and family-friendly with diverse character-building opportunities and organizations. The businesses that have been successful are the ones that have a stake in our community. They want to work here, and live here, and raise their families here. Communities throughout the country have built a reputation for supporting all arts disciplines. Towns like Santa Fe, Sedona, Charles, and Vancouver have based their economies on the arts, attracting artisans, tourists, and galleries. They believe that economic growth and tourism need a focus. What a wonderful identity for our beautiful settings and its creative economic nature in Fountain Hills. These are the contract budget expenses for two thousand thirteen, fourteen, to provide eighteen productions, year-round workshops, and summer camps. Royalties, forty-four thousand, nine hundred dollars. Costumes, ten thousand, four hundred dollars. Seats, eleven thousand, four hundred dollars. Instructors, ten thousand dollars. Total, seventy-six thousand, seven hundred dollars. These monies are essential for our fine programs and the continuation of statewide recognition. Fountain Hill Theater feels that although we are an arts organization and could be funded in part under arts and culture, we are equally vital to the economic development of Fountain Hills and should also be classified as an economic driver. Funding can also be made available by the town in this sector of the budget as well. Thank you for your time and consideration.
All right, council discussion on community services?
Thank you on behalf of myself and the board of directors, staff, and all the patients at Fountain.
I'm done. Council discussion on community services? Somebody want to start?
Madam Mayor? Maybe I should start with a question to our town manager. Um, wha- what is our, what are our reserves budgeted at this point for this year? Reserve meaning contingency fund?
Yes. Hundred and seventy-nine thousand, I believe is the number.
In?
In general fund.
Say that again, I'm sorry.
I believe it's a hundred and seventy-nine thousand in contingency fund, in general fund.
And that's primarily used for?
Shortfalls.
Like if the, the road gets washed out, or?
Oh, shortfalls. If we, if the revenues don't come in as projected, we have to make it up somehow. So those are reserves for that.
I'm a huge fan of, of both these organizations. Um, my, my children went to the Boys and Girls Club, which I was a paying member, and I, I've been to the, the theater many a times and, and, um, offer my help in, in, in fundraising and anything else that you all do, and I hope I don't get befriended on Facebook or anything I'm going to say. Um, but I'm, I, this is one of those things where I'm, I, I get scared, and it's back to the, the core service approach that, okay, if, if we need to pay for core services, at what point are, are we, um, not respecting our fiduciary responsibility to the town, um, in case something does happen? Um, I'm, I'm a contractor, developer, and, and, uh, all my projects, I, I try to keep a contingency fund, and, and I've got a project going on right now in Maryville that I, I've got way more in a contingency fund than what we have of, of a town of, you know, a forty million dollar budget. Um, I'm, I'm not saying that what you bring to the table is, is not worthy, it's, it's tremendous. It's arts and, just, that's the quality of life. But it's back to how, how we run our own households. At what point, if there's no money, what, what do we, at our own house budgets, how do we look and say, okay, we, we gotta cut cable, or, or, you know, we can't have that latte, or, you know, you can't cut your insurance, you can't cut your vehicle or the gas, you gotta pay your mortgage. Um, but if your brakes go out, you can't get to work, and now you're shooting yourself in the foot. Um, I'm, I'm open to discussion, definitely, um, and, and I support both these organizations. Tremendous asset to the town, but this is where, you know, I, I was afraid of, of getting to this point that, okay, now what do we do? This is, this is what's left. Um, I'm, I'm just looking at this fearful going in the next year, and I realize I'm the new guy, but I'm using that business model again, but going in a, a town this size with the budget that we have, with only a hundred and eighty thousand, um, contingency, that, that's scary to me. So, anybody else want to chime in?
Any other comments? Um, you could comment on other things, I mean, it's not that one.
Anyway, thank you. Um, in general, the community services division, um, uh, chart, I think it was maybe two before that, we've, we've got recreation, parks, community center operations, and senior services. So those are, um, annual, uh, expenditures there. Oh, that's a great, thank you. Where would the library, museum fall in, in that, in this box?
Um, Mayor, members of the council, the library museum is actually in the facilities budget. We don't, we don't run the library, all we do is maintain the building.
Okay, Mayor.
Same with the museum.
Oh, okay. Um, I guess, in general, and, uh, see, so what I'm trying to get at is that there are probably a lot of, of items like that, that, you know, would be looked at with the same kind of plan that you just had, um, including Jump Start, which you wanted, you know, there was, you, you saw, uh, you know, a return at a Jump Start, and I guess I would offer that movie, here's a return out of some of these also. So while I understand what you're saying about looking and, and feeling uncomfortable, there's a myriad of items like this. The, uh, the library, uh, museum, you know, was over three million dollars in taxpayer money to, 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 to build, then I think it's a couple hundred thousand a year. So, um, I just want to put it in perspective. I just have some to add, thanks.
Madam Mayor, um, I look at the fee for service, and, and yeah, that you can definitely, and, and I'm not questioning that we're getting a, a service for the fee. Um, it's, it's back to how you run your own household and you kind of rank. Your car payment, your mortgage, your gas in your car, all are going to rank up there a little bit higher than, and I'm not saying that either these organizations are cable television or lattes, but you, you get the gist, is if we are put in the position as we are now, because our budget is what it is, and we have to rank what we have to spend versus what we would like to spend, where's, where's that line? And, and I'm, I'm getting fearful, especially, um, and I know the, the water main break wasn't ours, but what, what did we spend on Tawara when that got washed out?
Sixty thousand.
Sixty thousand? I mean, that's, that's thirty percent of our, our, our proposed contingency fee. Aging infrastructure, uh, and I hate to sound like the downer, because I'm not, I'm, I'm still gung ho Fountain Hills, and, and I hope I'm still invited to, uh, the theater to, to tour up and trying to, um, get with them to, to go look, and, and I'd even ask some of the questions, what, what can we do to give them, uh, equity, meaning, I'm, I'm open to the idea of giving them the building or, or some other things out of the box to, to help them out, some more corporate sponsorship. Um, I'm, I'm coming from a place of, um, how would I run my own life if this was my own budget, and, and I'm back to that place? And, and I hear what you're saying. I'm in no way saying that, um, the services that you provide are not valuable, they're extremely valuable, it, it's quality of life. But it's, it's back to if the road gets washed out, you know, then, yes, we, we have emergency contingencies in place that we can do that, but I'm, uh, I'm just coming from a, a, I don't even want to say a place of fear, but I, I get the, a place from reality, I guess. And I, I'm trying to put this on myself, how would I run my own, uh, budget at home?
Yeah. Uh, I guess I'll just add to that, that, you know, I, I have kind of the same fear as far as our budget goes. Um, I'm also thinking of the loss of our construction sale tax, which might come in the future, which means we should start, we should save as much as we can right now in case that happens. If it doesn't happen this year, it could very easily happen next year. Um, Councilwoman Vicky always talks about her funds, because she knows how easily we can lose that, and we have lost it in the past. Um, with reference to what Councilwoman Yeh says about the sixty thousand dollars paid on the road, I'm concerned also about the monsoon season coming. I discussed this, um, with our manager, the condition of the roads, that we could see some very, um, we could see some high damage if we, if we have a bad season. So I, I know that the theater does have the use of two of the town buildings, and they do have, um, maintenance and repair, um, which none of the other organizations has, uh, plus, um, money. And I, I know that we just repaired their roof, uh, for the amount of sixteen thousand dollars. So anything else that happens during a storm, anything happens in the parking lot, anything happens as far as major repairs, uh, air conditioning, anything like that, you know, we cover the cost for that like we do for the building, uh, for the museum. I guess the difference, since the museum was brought up, I guess the difference between library and museum was that was a vote to go ahead and, um, that was a, a vote by the people to build that and to have that library and museum. So that's a little different. Um, but I'm, you know, I'm fairly not advocating doing anything with the buildings, um, they've made it their home, they have the theater, um, but I am concerned about the money issue, and I, I, I think that, uh, Councilwoman Yeh just, um, has some really good points about, uh, putting some extra money in that contingency fund. Anyone else? Councilwoman Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. I, uh, I'll be a little more optimistic. I believe that the economy is turning around. I believe that, um, we're going to see more income, and I believe that I would like to oppose the possibility of, of not assigning or not doing anything with the total amount of, uh, money budgeted for the theater or the Boys and Girls Club until we get through this budget, because if there is some money left on the table, it surely would be nice. I see value, I see huge value in both the Boys and Girls Club as well as the theater. And I would like to, uh, remind everybody that in two thousand and two, the main stage theater was used as a, as a rental for the town, and you could rent it, and you could hold your meetings there, and, which I did. In two thousand and two, I held a family reunion and, and brought, um, way too many people from Oklahoma out here, it was kind of scary. But, um, in two thousand and two, in August, we had a little monsoon roll through, and the kitchen leaked so badly that you could not use any aspect of the kitchen. And in two thousand and three, when the theater took it over, the theater spent, uh, just on the main stage building, they spent three hundred and sixty-one thousand, six hundred and seventy-one dollars of grants, donations, and their own money to get the building up to speed, including fire protection, uh, bathroom facilities. I mean, they upgraded the entire thing for the town Fountain Hills. It's, it's rather nice to have a building that you can actually go to now, that's safe to be in, the electrical system is new. It's, it's rather nice to have a building that you can actually go to now, that's safe to be in, the electrical system is new and the theater is thanks for that. And the youth theater in turn spent sixty two thousand, eight hundred and eighty two dollars on new fire doors, new sprinkler systems and electrical upgrades just so that building would be safe to, to occupy, someplace safe for children to go to. So it's, it's not as if the theater has just ignored the building or has, is actually using it for a dollar a year. They have actually invested a lot of their money into it in order to have something for Fountain Hills. So I think we need to also take into consideration the efforts of, of the theater as well as the Boys and Girls Club. I see, I see the Boys and Girls Club also extremely valuable. I, I don't have a count on how many children you take care of every day, but it's, I, I know it's, I, I hear compliments continuously about it. So opposed to just saying we're going to cut it fifty percent and be done with it, I think we need to reconsider it and at least get a little further into the budget and I so respect the staff and, and Mr. Buchanan's efforts in getting the budget to where we could at least talk about it. But if there is some money left on the table, I surely think that we need to reconsider and possibly reappropriate to the Boys and Girls Club and to the theater. Thanks.
Yes, I may. Okay, City Mayor. Um, I, I respect what I've heard from the mayor and, and Councilman Yates. Um, you know, at the end of the day, what defines a community? Look at the amount of money we're spending on pavement management. Look at the amount, amount of money we've just allocated into a special fund for economic development so we can have an economic development plan. But I don't wanna put all our eggs in one basket. And what I mean by that is how realistic is our economic development plan? For example, we talk about economic development plan and it's very popular in municipalities as the silver bullet. As long as Fountain Hills has been operating, it, it's modeled for raising revenue and when you look at the projections for sales tax revenue, that requires about three hundred and fifty million dollars worth of sales. Now think about that for a minute. We have an economic development plan, we're hoping for good results and I certainly am a, am a supporter of tourism, economic development as well as community services. I think they add value to who we are as, as a community. But just one example, you know, we look at economic development and we say to ourselves, okay, well, we have this plan and we're gonna spend, you know, we just allocated, you know, a hundred and three for tourism and we have a hundred and two left over and there's all this other stuff and it's whatever the numbers, it comes down to spending three hundred and sixty one thousand dollars. But we've never done the math. You know, I'm a believer in economic development, we haven't done the math. It will take, uh, our economic development program has to be so successful that we need to jumpstart our revenue and our sales by forty three and a half million dollars to generate an additional million dollars for our general fund. Now compare that to what it's taken historically to get to a three hundred thou- three, three hundred and fifty million in sales. Simply what I'm saying is economic development is important, we have a plan, it's a priority, but it is not the silver bullet and it doesn't define our community and it's, it's a little unrealistic to think that it is gonna be the savior because it won't. We don't have the capacity in this town to sustain this town on sale tax revenue and economic development. However, we need to do it as part of our, of our portfolio, as we diversify our portfolio. Now, I'm speaking numbers. What we're talking about here that's gonna take down the town or create a crisis scenario, if we take the food bank, the theater and the Boys and Girls Club and fund it as recommended, that is like less than two tenths of a percent of our budget. So we can't spend two se- two tenths of a percent of our budget on quality of life? And the theater is something that has been supported by every prior council. Why? Because it adds value to the community. And clearly we saw this evening, and we've stated this on several occasions, it has an impact on our economy. I get a lot of emails that say, we don't need, government shouldn't be funding arts and culture. Well, if we fund a theater that adds value to our economy, then maybe we should be funding it solely for that purpose. So I'm just trying to put things in a perspective and in terms of crisis management, we've, we've seen the worst of it and our tremendous staff has managed our way through it. And getting to the question earlier about, uh, shortfall, revenue shortfall, if you were to look at the presentation due we did last time around, yeah, our revenue is less than, than we, uh, uh, proposed, but if you look at every prior budget, that's basically the same. And if you look closely at it, staff has managed our expenditures well below what that shortfall is. So I, I'm not concerned about a crisis. And by the way, we have developed a rainy day fund for crises. We've paid off our debt, we've done a lot, we have a forty one million dollar budget and we're, we're, we're talking about these awesome programs that add value to our community that represent less than a tenth of a percent of our budget. So I don't think, I can't buy the argument that this is gonna take us down. I, 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 I just can't buy that argument. Thank you for allowing me to pontificate.
Councilwoman Hanson? Um, should be backing off of what Dennis said. Um, the theater has added an awful lot of value to those buildings and I think they take care of a lot of the maintenance themselves. Um, traditionally, the town would cover the, the major repairs and maintenance, but a lot of the day to day things and even the air conditioning, I know that they have paid for themselves. Um, I, when, when we were talking about the economic development program, and that was the only reason I was going back to that, you know, we look at things like the event marketing in the spring and summer and of course, I'm just gonna show in detail just for a dollar amount, but if we add those two things together, it almost funds the theater at what it currently is funded at. And, and I'm not saying that, okay, that we should do this, I'm just using that as an example because the theater is a known entity. We know that they bring people into town and we saw in some of the, the slides tonight, some, some proof of, of the people that are brought to town, the money that they spend here. And I totally agree with Henry that in, in the whole scope of this budget, this dollar amount is, is really insignificant. And I agree with Dennis that I would like to see us get through the rest of the budget before just saying, okay, we're gonna take these fifty percent cuts and, and be done with it. Anyone else? Vice Mayor?
No, no, after you. Okay, thank you. Um, as far as, as far as putting this off till the end of the budget, um, I'm gonna make a prediction that at the end of the day, we're gonna have a shortfall and we're gonna then have this discussion because as, as it stands right now with the budget that's presented by staff, where with the, um, passage of the funding for the food bank, we're nine thousand, seventy five dollars above what the projected budget is at least, uh, as far as what staff has pre- presented. If we wait till the end, I think we're probably gonna be nine thousand, seventy five dollars. You know, I, I don't anticipate any major changes. These are really the last two major issues that in, in years past that the council have considered and, and debated and, and discussed. Now with respect to the concerns about budget shortfalls and the questions about contingency fund, I think that should've been remarked at the very beginning or the outset of this meeting before we started talking about all these other items. Because all these other items and the other departments and the budgets that we passed should've been looked under the same microscope or through the same glasses as we're looking at these ones now. Um, so that, that should've been brought up at, at least in my opinion, some time ago. Uh, with respect, um, to the theater, uh, we did get as a council as a whole an invitation by, uh, the director of our staff to inspect the tax records, come over and look at the books and that sort of thing. I, I took up on the opportunity, I went over, I had the opportunity to inspect your tax, tax records, look at portables, monthlies and had the opportunity to look, look at everything. And, and I know that's been subject of discussion in the past and I, I found, um, it to be accommodating and although I didn't make copies, I, I certainly was afforded that opportunity. One thing I do have a question about and, and, um, Mayor, with, with your permission, I'd like to ask one of our, um, one of those in attendance here to come up, he, he probably thinks he's off the hook for the rest of the night, but we, we do have our, our chamber, um, CEO who's here, Mr. Farrar, who's texting. Right, Mr. Farrar, I, I was just curious, this is, 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 uh, is president and CEO of the chamber, I just had, I just had a couple of questions about economic development.
Ladies and gentlemen?
For coming up, Frank?
Thank, thank you, please. On economic development, uh, remember, before you asked the question, let me say a word.
I don't think you know my question.
I know what the, you said economic development, so let me address that if I may. The beginning of this year, the council, our board of directors, voted to di- to leave economic development in the hands of the town and support whatever the town decides to do. Okay, that's my statement. How's your question?
Okay, thank you. Um, with respect to economic development, I, I know that you, you presented studies in the past, uh, studies about the fairs. I think you had, I think you had, uh, a ma- a grad student from ASU did a study for you one year or, I think.
At once?
I don't know if it was a grad student, but you had somebody from ASU.
No, we had, uh, we had several studies.
Based on all the studies, has, has, have you done any studies as far as the impact, uh, economic impact that the theater has?
No, no.
Okay, are you able to speak to that based on the information that was presented?
I think the information was presented, it was excellent, I mean, it was very professional. There's no doubt about it, I don't know, I can't speak to specific things in it, I'm simply, I, I don't know enough about their operations or anything like that, but as far as what they presented, especially the part about dressing me up, was a, was a sell. Okay.
Well, I guess what I'm trying to get at, I'm just trying to get your opinion.
I didn't, actually, I don't do economic development studies on anything that the chamber is not involved in the fact. If that can help your question.
How the theater's not a member of the chamber?
Yes, it is, but we don't do studies on all of our businesses, absolutely not. We wouldn't have the, the things that we do, the studies on are things that we do know that have a direct impact on the town and its residents. And the two fairs are of course the biggest things that we have going and they were here long before I was. I believe the one fair in October is now thirty six years old and twenty seven years old for the, um, and I'm not quite that old. Or I haven't been here.
Well, I appreciate it, my intention wasn't to put you on the spot.
No, it's fine, I don't mind being on the spot.
Okay.
I love it.
Do, do you have any reason as far as the, the numbers and the information that was presented? I'm just drawing on your experience as a chamber president, that their numbers wouldn't be accurate as far as economic impact?
I can't speak to that, I don't know the basis of what they use.
Okay.
I mean, it wouldn't be fair, no more than it would be fair for y'all to try to verify what I'm putting down on paper.
Okay.
When I do it, when I do it, I don't do it anymore. I used to remember and everybody said, oh, those are Frank's numbers, the hell with it. And that's really what it was. So we went out and got special people and professional people consultants or whatever you wanna call them to do our studies for us and I just present the numbers. And you guys probably still say, oh, yeah, right. So I don't know. Anyway, I can't verify that.
All right, thank you, Frank.
Thank you.
Councilwoman?
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm right there, I mean. Um, I, again, in, in no way questioning the validity of, of the, what you bring to the table at Fountain Hills, um, but to address what, uh, council member, uh, Roger brought up, I, I am a numbers guy and, and the reason I'm so gung ho on, uh, economic development, um, and I shared with you, I have memberships to all these different economic development. Uh, Nielsen cleared up, uh, one of the, the programs I use. If you do just the boundaries of Fountain Hills, which this would include the people who come and shop and work here, uh, we have a two hundred million dollar gap of leakage, of, of sales that are going out of town. Even if you take out all the car sales, because typically people aren't gonna drive to Fountain Hills to buy their, their new car, um, that, that still puts us at like a hundred and thirty three million dollar gap. And these are very easy retailers, uh, furniture, uh, electronics, uh, uh, grocery and whatnot. Well, at, at a hundred and thirty three million dollar gap, um, to invest to go after that, uh, if we did get all that, which even that's unrealistic, that's a thirty four million dollar infusion of, of tax revenue. So I, I do feel it, it's justifiable to invest the economic development. I, and, and I appreciate where you're coming from, but even if it was half of that or half of a half, it, it's still worth the, the three hundred thousand dollars that we're investing. I, again, I'm in not, no way saying that, that your programs are, are not, uh, valuable, um, but back to what you're saying, how miniscule the amount is as, as it pertains to the budget, that's kinda how I feel about what our contingency is and that's what scares me of that, about an organization this size, a, a four- forty million dollar budget, when I have a three million dollar project that I have more money set aside in contingency on a building I'm doing than we do of a town, that's, that's the comparison I'm making.
Mayor, Mayor, if I may, um, and, you know, once again, as I said before, I'm a proponent of economic development and, um, I simply am saying that we need to be realistic in terms of what it, what it can yield for us. And, and, uh, Councilman Yates, something that you've talked a lot about and I agree with it, it's market, market driven. And, well, it's taken thirty years, market driven, for us to hit about thirty million dollars in sales revenue and it might take another ten or twenty to get there. I think we're gonna get a jump if the economic development plan is successful, but we need to be realistic about, you know, you're taking the thirty four million, um, jump. I mean, how long's that gonna take? Hopefully soon, but then again, that's gonna yield less than a million, million dollars. So it doesn't really solve the problem, it addresses, it addresses, is part of the issue. And, um, you know, Fountain Hills is a tough nut to crack. Um, and I think the market has told us kind of the type of community we are and what people perceive us to be, but there's certainly room for growth in economic development. Thank you, Mayor.
Anyone else? Okay. Go ahead. Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, in line with what we were doing earlier as far as, as far as the previous contract and, and the statement that I made regarding the food bank and, and based on, on the, the budget as it were and what we did two years ago and last year, everything remained status quo. Um, last year, as I understood, let's just take these, let's take the first one. Um, it seems that we're focusing primarily on the theater, so I'm gonna take the easy one first. Uh, with respect to the Boys and Girls Club, we had funded it at eighty thousand last year. I do understand and respect the gentleman's request for an additional twenty thousand. Um, frankly, in my opinion, I, I just don't, don't see that additional money there. But with respect to, um, the Boys and Girls Club, I would, um, I would make a motion for the same twenty percent reduction that we did with the, uh, with the food bank. Now, not comparing the two, not playing off of each other, but again, in line with slowly moving away from funding these types of community service contracts and not cutting the legs out from under. So I would move to increase above the staff recommendation to the Boys and Girls Club to sixty four thousand dollars.
A motion of second, uh, speaker card?
No, sit right to me.
Further discussion? Councilwoman?
Henry, if you could use your math, where, where would that put us, twenty four thousand more?
Well, once again, um, um, when you take all of these contracts, um, it's, 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 it's less intensive expense of the, the total budget. So you, you can do the same math, um, put the increase twenty four thousand dollars and divide it by forty one million and you get, you know, my calculator doesn't go that far. Um, to answer your question. And, and along those lines, your concern about the notion of contingencies in a hundred and seventy thousand, um, I know you, you understand the budget well. We have contingencies, we have a rain, we have a rainy day fund, we have a general fund reserve, some committed, some uncommitted. We, we are on solid ground as, as, as a municipality in terms of handling things of, of, of that nature. But, uh, it's, the number is, is, is miniscule. Stand for your original question, thank you.
Councilwoman Vicky?
Thank you, Mayor. Just two things, the idea of economic development and I know I said this to you before, she thought, it's not, to me, it's never gonna solve our financial revenue problems in this town. It will help, but as somebody... It will help, but as somebody, and I know I always say this, but I've lived here thirty years. I loved living here then. I've loved living here the entire time. To me, the economic development is offering to people that live here and work here an opportunity to live in a community that has a lot of benefits, a lot of, uh, choices. Um, people are able to make their living, um, you're able to get your needs. You're able to go to a show, or hopefully a movie someday, or, in other words, it's almost all about quality of life, economic development, because it's not going to be driven by the tax dollars. That, I don't want to be on a council that's just, that my goal is to get more money into the coffers. I, I think the goal is that people that live here thrive, enjoy it, get what they want, go to school, play soccer, do all of those things. And these things contribute towards that. And this, and this Boys and Girls Club that we're talking about now, um, and something that Kate said about gradually trying to explicate ourselves from these things, what, what, what I think with these items are that they keep getting seg- segregated. But they're not. It, we have a library, yes, the library was built, three-point-seven-million dollars. We voted on it as a building. The community said they want a library. But every year, we don't thrash around, oh, should we spend that two-hundred-and-twenty-three-thousand dollars a year for the library museum, and should we fix the air conditioning, should we fix the rug? We don't segregate it like that. It's just become part of the budget. So I don't totally understand why these things don't just become part of the budget. So, you know, we don't say, well, who did, um, the parks hire to mow the lawn this time, or to do the landscaping? It's just part of that department. And are we going to have an after-school teen program in our parks and recs? Hmm, do we need it? No, because we have this. So why do we continue to extricate these things and act like they're, um, some sort of, you know, uh, redhead, you know, what do they say? I don't say that. I like redheaded people. But in other words, they, everything all goes towards the same thing. And as, and as we go through, say, well, maybe not so much this year for that, maybe, but, but stop taking these things and treating them like they're something different. What's the tourism? It's economic development, it's part of that. Someone's deciding that that's a good way to spend money in economic development, along with all these other things that I think will come, become part of the ec- economic development plan. So I appreciate what Kate wa- is doing here as far as putting some money back in, and I can support that. But philosophically, I, I would really wish we would stop segregating these things. It's not, it's, are you going to say when we have to do the facilities and you see how much we spend on the library, are you going to say, no, that's not, you know, we have, we can't have latte? And in other words, it's kind of, it's kind of the same thing. So just, I just hope as we, maybe next year, we won't have this as these special items. They'll just be parts of, as part of the back instead of the front.
Madam, here.
Well, you know, it's still a comment I'd like to make about as far as the museum goes. The museum does have the infrastructure that we do, um, take care of, but they also don't have the opportunity to get the cash, the money. And if they were forced into a situation where they pay their bills, they had to start a foundation, they had to do an endowment program, they had to step as their fundraiser. So, I, I mean, I, I think that a lot of the public sees that difference, that for the last fifteen years, the theater has been singled out as being a so special more than anyone else. I don't think anyone says that they shouldn't have the buildings like the museum has or shouldn't have the infrastructure. Any infrastructure does get expensive. It's the sixteen thousand for the roof. There has been air conditioning repairs. There's been test control, B removal, parking lot fixing, lights in the parking lot. There's, there's been a lot of expenses over the years. Um, I think we, we all saw the email from the gentleman who added it all up, and in the last fifteen years, uh, it came to nine-hundred-and-twenty-three-thousand dollars. And that, and that's a lot of money. So, you know, I can understand that people in the museums do that and say, well, why not us? Why don't we get a little bit of money? Why do we just get the building? You know, then we have the cohabitants that gets the building, and well, they don't get any money, they get the building. So I, I guess, um, they see that as, no one would say that they can't use the building. No one would say that we can't keep up the building. But I guess it's just a constant flow of tax on top of that, and they're the only entity that is singled out in that way. Um, I know that, um, the staff had proposed a different way of, of putting this out that other people would be able to apply, and that didn't go forward. So, um, I, I would have liked to see the museum able to, oh, also apply for the money because they're preserving the history of Fountain Hills. Um, and they're struggling. They're struggling also. So, and, and I'm saying, you know, if we, I guess I would feel that we're more on solid ground if I didn't read the budget and read words like razor thin, on the edge, and hear about shortfalls, and think about all the things that could happen. I mean, even in your own family, when you make a budget, you got to think about things that could happen. This may be a small amount, but there's also the equity in the building, and there's also all the maintenance and repairing. You know, I just, I just think people see, and, and there's, you know, there's, there's a lot of other things involved too, and I'm, I'm not going to get into other things, but it's a big number, nine-hundred-and-twenty-three-thousand dollars over fifteen years. And maybe back then, when we did have a lot of money, um, to go around, that, that council at that time decided that, that they could give the money and they still would have plenty of money left over in case of emergencies. The situation is a little different right now.
Mayor, do we have a motion on, do we have a motion on the table for Boys and Girls Club?
Yeah, we're in discussion right now, Councilman.
Real quick, Henry, two things. Asking any entity, especially that has a source of revenue or income, to try to put together a sustainable model, I, I don't think that's unrealistic. Hiring a landscaper to do a job, that's, that's an expense. Um, and again, I am in no way saying that the two entities that we're talking about are not valuable, but it's, it's about, um, who, who's got a model that they can put together. Goodwill is a nonprofit, but now they have a model put together that they're self-sustaining. Several nonprofits out there.
You might be just discussing the motion.
Yes, I apologize. And, and then the last thing that I wanted to bring up is that the, the people have told us through, uh, primary property tax and through a lot of these, uh, um, discussions that we have, that they do want economic development to pay for the quality of life that we're talking about. So I don't, I don't think it's, um, off the table to, to say, I mean, chances are eighty percent of us in this room voted down that last primary property tax. So that means eighty percent of us, um, you know, aren't looking for, um, any other funding source than, than economic development. Again, I, I am in no way saying that these are not valuable, but, you know, I, I keep hearing people bring up economic development as that's not, uh, um, what, what we should be pursuing, and I, I just...
That's not all the thing said. It's saying it's not silver bullet. So don't keep going over that. It's not, it's not silver bullet. Thank you, Mayor.
You want to comment, go ahead.
My comment was that we have a motion on the table, and I would suggest that we maybe vote on that motion, and then we can get into the theater and have more discussion about that. That, that's much of this, and so.
Unfortunately, I usually let everybody pretty much satisfied that they have said all they want to say, um...
But if we have a motion on the table, the discussion's only yet.
Yeah. So let's, well, let's go.
Somebody called for it.
Yeah.
Called for the vote, I guess.
All right, um, do we have a roll call vote?
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Roger?
Hi.
Councilmember Yates?
May.
Vice Mayor Elke?
Aye.
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Councilmember Dickey?
Aye.
And Mayor Tavna?
May.
Mayor Five Two.
Thank you, sir, for coming out.
All right, so we have now left the theater and the rest of the package. Um, is everyone satisfied with the rest of the community services other than theater right now? Can we, can we vote that part in? Does anyone have any further questions about the rest of the community services? Can I get a motion?
Mayor, I move to accept the, uh, community services budget as presented, um, minus the, uh, community theater.
Second, please.
Second.
And no speakers?
No.
Okay, stand a roll call. Oh, any discussions on that part? No. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Roger?
Aye.
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Elke?
Aye.
Councilmember Dickey?
Aye.
Councilmember Yates?
Aye.
And Mayor Tavna?
Aye.
Mayor Seven Zero.
Okay, now we're left with the theater. Um, I'll take a motion or just further discussion?
Okay, Mayor, I, I, I'll make a motion, just to kind of get the ball rolling. Um, I, I moved that, um, we fund the theater at a hundred percent, um, with fifty percent coming from the general fund and fifty percent coming from the economic development fund.
Discussion? Vice Mayor?
In line with, sorry, in line with what, um, I have previously commented as far as the, uh, reductions, um, again, philosophically, in my opinion, I, I would, uh, rather not see the town funding these types of programs, not just the theater, but the food bank, um, Boys and Girls Club. Um, I would rather leave that to the private sector. I was in line with that. I would move to amend the motion, um, to reduce the percentage by twenty percent based on, uh, Councilman Roger's motion. And, and if I could add some clarification, the hundred percent funding, is that the seventy-two-two-forty? Or is that the seventy-two-forty?
I intended to be for what they requested, which was seventy-two-forty.
Okay, thank you. I would, I would move to reduce, reduce that amount by, uh, twenty percent, and, uh, the remainder of the motion would remain the same as far as the funding is concerned.
Okay, we have an amended motion for a second on Vice Mayor's amended motion. Okay, amended motion, I, for lack of a second, now we have the original motion. Is there any further discussion on the original motion? Further discussion?
Question, what, with respect to the funding, is that coming, is the motion coming from the sixty percent? Is that my understanding?
Yes, sir.
And when I say the sixty percent, I mean the sixty-forty of economic development.
Yeah, the intent of the motion was to, um, look at that seventy-two-forty. And because we're looking, as these numbers are adding up, and we're being asked to address where that money will come from, um, we did some movement on that fund, moving the Christmas tree lights out. So that kind of balances all of that out, so, um, my thought process was, if it's funded at a hundred percent, fifty coming from the community services budget and fifty percent from economic development, that actually that fifty percent from community services would be less money out of community services than currently is proposed at fifty percent. So to an- so to answer the question, basically, it's a hundred percent funding, fifty percent coming from the community services budget, which is general fund, and fifty percent of that coming from the economic development, um, sixty percent.
Do I have a motion and a second? Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember El- I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Elke.
I, I see the value in the theater, and, um, although I'd like to see, see a twenty percent reduction based on, uh, my previous comments, I'll vote aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Yates?
Again, I love the theater, but unfortunately, may.
Councilmember Roger?
Aye.
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Councilmember Dickey, that's the same. And Mayor Tavna?
May.
Mayor Three Two.
All right, so I guess we, we're at nine fifteen. If it's okay with everybody, we will proceed on Monday with capital improvement plan and start from there. Hopefully, get through that on Monday. So I need a motion to adjourn, and a second, and all in favor. All right.
All right.